Good evening. We are going to start the City of Columbus City Council Workshop on April 9th, 2024. Time is 5:36. We're going to do things a little bit out of order from the agenda tonight. Our mayor is on his way back from the state Capitol where he did some testimony today, so he'll be joining us in just a little bit. So we're going to start with item number four, which is the cannabis ordinance discussion, and I'll refer to, whoops, before I do that, we need to do our pledge of allegiance. Let's do our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, a nation of God, invincible for the liberty of speech.
Thank you. So we will proceed then with item number four, unless there's any changes or suggestions for the agenda other than changing the order of things. Do I see anything? Nope, okay. Okay, item number four, cannabis ordinance discussion. Mr. Davis, you can take it away.
Thank you, Janet. In August of 2023, the Minnesota Legislature approved the cultivation, manufacturing, and sale of adult-use cannabis. The approved legislation creates the formation of the Office of Cannabis Management, which is tasked with the development of rules, licensing, and enforcement for this new industry. Currently, cannabis is legal for individuals to possess, use, and grow in Minnesota, subjects to limitations related to the amount possessed and produced. State of Minnesota has yet to finalize their rules and regulations for cannabis licensing. The League of Minnesota Cities at this time has not created a sample ordinance to guide municipalities in their efforts relating to the regulating, licensing, and sale of the permitted products. City staff has contacted the following cities: Horse Lake, Scandia, North Branch, Isani, Cambridge, Lionel Lakes, Centerville, Wyoming, and East Bethel to inquire about their status relating to their efforts to enact a cannabis ordinance. Of those contacted, only Cambridge and Isani have adopted ordinance regulating the sale of cannabinoid products. The others are still waiting for additional information from the Office of Cannabis Management and the League of Minnesota Cities as to the means to address this issue. The ordinance for Cambridge and Isani are fairly identical, and there are lots of commonalities in the both of them, and they essentially relate to the licensing and sale and land use principles relating to this type of regulation for the product. The city of Cambridge has also adopted hours of operations for sales, whereas Isani has not, and they also have specific procedures for penalties, fees, suspension timelines, and violations. Both of their ordinances are attached for your review. This agenda item is just an update on the status for neighboring municipalities regarding their status on this matter, and open, this is open for any discussion or direction that city council may deem appropriate to pursue the ordinances that are going to be required for cannabis licensing and regulation.
Thank you, Jack. Are there any questions or discussions from the council?
So this is Sue. My only question is, do you know if there's any changes to the timeline that the state is going to have their, all their rules and everything completed?
I don't think anybody knows yet. You know, the anticipation is the product is going to be legal for sale sometime in early 2025, but again, we've heard nothing. We've contacted the league. The league says they're still waiting on some direction from the state, and the state, as I understand, as of at least a week or 10 days ago, doesn't even have a director of the Office of Cannabis Management. So we're all just kind of roping our way along, trying to find some direction here, and I don't think anybody really wants to do too much until they know exactly what they're doing, so you don't have to do it twice.
Well, that's why I was kind of surprised that two of the cities already have theirs done.
Well, and I think in talking to both of those, they just wanted to have something in place. I know that one of them already has had a store that deals in THC products, so I think they did that to kind of get ahead of the curve and help some regulations with that. And the other one's getting quite a few licensing requests, and they just wanted to get something out there, so. But of the other seven cities that haven't done anything, they're all in the same boat that we are. We're just waiting to see what's, what, what, what the ground rules are for addressing this.
Okay, thank you. Ron, do you have any questions?
No, other than, like I said, it's got to go before the planning commission. It's got a lot of work to be done on it. I don't even, really, I wonder why we're talking about it.
Well, and I think that's why there isn't a deeper discussion. I think originally, we had intended to have the city attorney here to sort of get us started, but in discussing it further, excuse me, it didn't seem to make sense to have her come out when there's so many loose ends and unknowns. We could end up doing this two or three times over, so I think it's helpful to know what our neighboring communities are doing. I think my only question is, has the league made any statement at all about whether they would, you know, forge forward without the state? I mean, it's, you know, halfway through the year almost, so.
There's been, there's been no indication that they're going to go at this independently.
Okay. And then, you know, I would just also remind us all that we have done some work on this. I mean, we, we, you know, prohibited the public use of cannabis in, you know, public spaces or in public-facing spaces on private property. So, I mean, we have done some work on this, but I think the rest of it really, it could really be exercise in futility until we know what, where the state is heading, so I think that makes sense. But thank you for putting this together so that we can see what our neighbors are doing. So then I'm going to move on to item number two, which is the Lake Drive corridor study. And Kevin, could you start us off on that, please?
Yeah, good evening, council members. Kevin Bitner, city engineer. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation. Our transportation group has been contracted by Anoka County to do a corridor study on Lake Drive, and so they have requested an opportunity to come and speak to the council in regards to their study and some of their findings that they have at this point. And so with us to do this presentation is Mike Larson. He's in our transportation group, and also Jack Forsland, who's with Anoka County. So I will turn this over to Mike to get us going.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, Mike Larson with Bolton Mank, the project manager, kind of leading this study in partnership with the county of Lake Drive. Our study really started off back in the fall of this last year, and the first step of our corridor study is to really gather feedback, do, do a desktop analysis of, of what the traffic data tells us, how it's working today, what works well, what doesn't. And then we had a public open house in December of last year to go to the public, listen to them, listen to what are their thoughts on the corridor, what works well, what doesn't. And it's always interesting to see how that jives with, with what the data tells us versus what the public perception is. Next in the process is working through different alternatives. How can we solve those problems? And then ultimately, our goal is to recommend a final concept at the end of the study, which will hopefully wrap up in the next few months here in the spring. From there, we'll have a final concept and study report to be shared with both cities and the county, and then up from there, it's up to the county to take it through preliminary and final design and ultimately construction. And Jack, any update or anything to share on?
Yeah, this is, well, the corridor study from Main Street up to Kettle River. We know that we need to reconstruct this within probably the next five or 10 years, so what we're doing now is just a corridor study, which is our first really stab at, trying to identify some design concepts that we would carry forward to pre-design. So this is where the project really starts, and then preliminary design, environmental work, that's while we're trying to obtain funding. Right now, it's not funded, but we want to get everything ready to go for when it is. So, yeah. So, yeah, now's the time to figure out what to build when the time comes to meet future goals, future needs, that sort of thing. So really, when the study kicks off, the main things we need to identify are what are the primary needs out here? What must we fix with, with the use of public dollars? Jack, you can go to the next slide, please. So the main things are, number one, the infrastructure condition. The, the road bed is very, very old. It's past its serviceable life, and the county can't keep dumping money on top of the road. It needs to be fully rebuilt from the bottom up. So that, that's one of the main drivers. Another one is the walkability and bikeability of the corridor, and this is something I was confirmed by our public open house, is that both communities, the county, really see a need for making improvements for non-motorized travel, whether that's a trail or sidewalk, things like that. The next one is vehicle safety. There are a few areas of this corridor that are performing with above-average crash rates, more crashes than we like to see. We have seen a few fatal or serious injury crashes in the news lately, so those are all things we look at. A secondary need, so not something we necessarily need to fix, but what we do take a look at is the vehicle mobility, so making sure that we've got reduced delays, adequate, acceptable travel times, things like that in the project area. Can you go ahead, Jack? So I won't go through, I guess, all the technical background of what we've done, just for time's sake, but I guess, this is a board from our first open house, where we explain to the public how the road is serving different travel modes today. So we've got vehicles, trucks, bikes, and pedestrians. So your average passenger car is served pretty well by this roadway today. There's not a lot of congestion. We know that sometimes on those summer Fridays, when 35 is backed up, we see a lot of cut-through traffic. That's not necessarily something we can fix with this. That's just kind of a, something we'll have to live with on those few days of the year. But generally, delays on the highway, people getting in and out of their driveways, it's, it's pretty acceptable. Trucks, there's a lot of commercial and industrial land use out on this corridor, so we do see a lot of truck traffic out here. They're served relatively well, but a lot of these businesses don't have turn lanes. We're kind of missing that, that deceleration space where those trucks can get out of the way of people moving through the corridor, so room for improvement there. But the two modes that we really fail today are the bikes and the peds. We do have some wide shoulders for bikers, which are okay for some of the more experienced bikers, who are more tolerable to biking next to high-speed traffic, but families and people who aren't as comfortable biking on a roadway like that really aren't served. And then the pedestrians, there's really no pedestrian space to speak of outside of those wide shoulders, so taking stock of how it's working today and where there's room for improvement. Let me go to the next one, Jack. And then a few other things we look at. We look at traffic volumes and speeds, so how many vehicles drive this roadway today? How many cars, how many trucks, how many pedestrians and bikers? We take a look at their speeds. A lot of times, we hear that from the public, that people are always speeding on this roadway, so it's nice to have a data point and validate that. Crash history, so we do look at Department of Public Safety crash history data to identify crash trends, crash locations, get a good understanding of where there might be specific issues or, I guess, wholesale underlying issues throughout the corridor. We also look at the access inventory, the management of, of the, this, the study area. This road is unique in that it, it serves a very long trip purpose. It's an artiro roadway, so it serves long regional trips, but we do have a lot of accesses, a lot of driveways on the corridor, so that in a perfect world, we wouldn't have very many accesses at all on a roadway like this, but just the nature of what we have, that's something that we'd be battling here, safety-wise. Intersection traffic control, so looking at how our, our traffic signal at Main Street is working, how our side street stops working. We've got a roundabout planned at Kettle River Drive, so making sure that that's going to work acceptably. Turn lane needs, we take stock of where there are turn lanes today and how that meets the county's policy for where turn lanes should be installed. Where do we need more? Where do they need to be longer? That type of thing. And then just taking stock of the existing speed limits out there. It's a 55 mile an hour road throughout our study area. Go to the next one, Jack. So then in our open house, we, we presented the public with this data. We listened to their problems. We also had an opportunity to let them vote on what they might like to see out here, various typical sections of the roadway. So do we want trail? Do we want sidewalk? Do we like the rural feeling, or do we like an urban feeling with curb and gutter? That sort of thing. Do we want a raised center median, a center two-way left turn lane? Different variations of all those. So kind of an exercise to perform with the public to get them thinking on what's possible, what do they like, what, what do they see out here? And we'll take that, and then we'll, what we've done is kind of weighed how those things might actually work. Go to the next one, Jack. So our first open house, that was in December of last year. It was very well-attended. We had over 50 people sign in, and probably upwards of 60, 70 people here at City Hall. Got a lot of good feedback. Some of the key things we heard are, a lot of the folks living on the corridor would like to see a multi-use trail. One side of the road, they feel like is enough. Another comment was on the Kettle River and Camp Three project, which the county has planned. A lot of questions on how that ties into the study, and I guess just questions specific to that project and not so much our study. A lot of requests for turn lanes. I want a turn lane here at this business, longer turn lane there, that sort of thing. Comments that they see people speeding, there are too many trucks. And then what we often hear on these types of projects is, they want to know how it's going to impact their private property or their access. So all good comments that, that either confirm what we saw, or we kind of go back and relook at things, and then we definitely, when we evaluate our concepts, we, we do try to make sure that we, we tick those boxes as well. And then with the voting, the option the public most favored, and it was actually quite overwhelming, was option three, which was a three-lane section, so that center two-way left turn lane. Presumably, the benefit of that is everyone's got a left turn lane in and out of their driveway, sort of thing. So there is a safety benefit typically with that. A lot of people really don't want to see a raised concrete median. Obviously, that might take away access to businesses and people's driveways. Next slide, Jack. So I won't go into depth on everything we, we do to evaluate these, but overall, in the corridor, we look at, again, where turn lanes warranted, making sure we have them in the appropriate places, making sure we've got the right intersection traffic control, roundabouts, signals, all that sort of thing. We do look at water resources. Even driving here today, I see there's water sitting in the ditch when it rained over a day ago, so at a high level, looking at where do we have water challenges? Where can we store it? Where can we treat it better? The constructibility and staging, thinking ahead. Some of these typical sections or alternatives might be more challenging to build while maintaining access, so starting to think about, I guess, the impacts of actually building something out here, and do some of these concepts make it easier to build and maintain access when we get to that point? And then actually start drawing up our typical sections, our concept layouts, how do things fit? How expensive might they be? How impactful might they be? Those are all, all the things that will eventually boil down and rate our concepts on, once we get to that point. The next one, Jack. So I guess where we're currently leaning, as far as our typical section, is, I guess, what I'd call a hybrid three-lane section. It wouldn't be striped in the middle, as I guess with the two-way left turn arrows. There are a few reasons for that, and the main one is, it's generally not recommended that those are used in a high-speed corridor of 55 miles an hour. If you have two left turners driving in that lane, opposing each other at high speed, it's, it's sometimes tricky to judge who's going to turn left when. So you kind of hear the, the term suicide lane in some areas. That's, it, it may not be the best fit to stripe something like that here, but what we have, this striped median or the striped buffer area, it, it doesn't necessarily encourage driving in that middle space for long periods of time. It's more so a spot to just decelerate and turn as soon as you can. And that might not be a fit for the whole corridor, but it, it's generally where we're feeling for most of the corridor that could be a good fit. Of course, at intersections, we'd have traditional turn lanes, things like that, so this is more of a mid-block application. We do have a trail on one side. That'd be a 10-foot-wide trail that could accommodate bikes and pedestrians, and then we're maintaining the, the rural section that there is today. And then last slide, Jack, if you could. I guess just charting forward our, our next steps here, we're hoping to determine what that final concept is this month, and then schedule a second open house with the public late April, early May. Show them what our preferred concept is, gather feedback on that, and adjust accordingly. Make some tweaks, and then hopefully have a final concept and report done by May. And that's, that's where we're at right now. I'll open it up to any questions or comments.
So this is Sue. I do have one question, and I'm not sure if I'm understanding that middle lane totally, because, I mean, I've, I know what a normal middle lane is for right turn, or turning, a turning lane. But when it's striped like that, how do you, how do you control, like, people are going to actually turn in that lane, right?
Right.
But how do you control them not, like, entering too early and, like you say, run into somebody else that's?
Right. No, that, that's a great question, and that's something we're, we're chewing on still. It's, it's a unique roadway, and this would be a unique application. The, the sheer number of accesses we have and the number of people we need to turn left into driveways is, is something we're trying to accommodate, and typically, that, that middle left turn lane really helps with that. You don't have people slowing down in the through lane, no rear ends, things like that. People are, people feel like they can take their time making that left turn, because they don't have someone sitting behind them. So it's, it's unique in that it might be something that drivers will have to learn the best way to use, because it is, there isn't one in the area, there's.
Well, yeah, that was my next question. Is there another one around that?
No, no, and that's, when, when we thought of this idea, we, we tried to look around, I guess, this area of the metro and the metro in general, for a roadway like, like, like Drive, in that it's high-speed, it's rural, and there's a whole lot of access, and there really aren't very many at all, which is, which is unique, and it's a challenge, but, yeah, so it, it'd be new, and we expect the public to have some questions on how to actually, how it actually works.
I'm glad you asked that question, Sue, because if you go towards the freeway on Lake Drive, just after you cross Main Street, there is a section there that's striped in the middle, and I've known people that have been pulled over because they've gone over to that to turn left, like, to get into the bank, and they've been told it's illegal to do that. So I think it is going to be really confusing. Now, again, I, I don't know the traffic rules that well, tend to see whether or not that's in the little booklet or whatever, but.
I didn't even know that was illegal. I do it all the time.
I know, but that's what I've been told, and so, you know, a lot of people don't know it's illegal to pass on the right on a shoulder either, but they still do it, so.
Right, and I think that's one of our biggest challenges, is the amount of traffic and the amount of turns, and people that are coming up behind you when you're turning, and they're like, "Ah," and they go on the shoulder, which is illegal, but also they don't know if there's somebody walking or biking or something like that, which a lot of people do on the shoulder. So I, I don't know. I guess I'd have to, I don't know if there's any other options for that middle, but I like the idea of something in the middle.
Right, right. It's, it's a unique middle ground between what we'd like to do, which is that normal three-lane, and really, nothing, really, which doesn't get at the problem that we see out here with safety and comfort and all that, so.
And is the problem with turn lanes, just there'd be too many of them?
I guess with the, the normal, like, continuous left turn lane, it, it's really not meant for those higher-speed roadways.
But what if it wasn't continuous? What if you, you didn't have a left turn to every single access point, but you had a left turn to, you know, I don't know if there would be a frontage road or something that would get them to some of those other places?
Sure, sure, yeah. I, I guess the, the county has a policy and warrants for when left turn lanes would be allowed, and a, a frontage road system would definitely help with this, this driveway problem, but we've only got so much space to work with and money as well. So, yeah, that would be a great solution, if it weren't for putting a frontage road in people's yards and.
And if, I can add some stuff to you. Yeah, we have to have, like, a transition distance to, to accommodate a left turn to come down to, from speed of 55 miles per hour, so the driveway access is so frequent in there, we wouldn't be able to do that. Regarding, I think there are a couple examples of something like this, like in St. Michael, I believe, there's 241, I believe it is, which is similar to this, which is a higher-speed roadway, which essentially is striped off median, so it's just, it's not, but you can use it to, to cross. And we did have a meeting last week at the Lionel Lakes City Council Workshop, and it was asked the police department that was there what the policy is, and they weren't aware of it as far as crossing or getting into that center area to make a lane, you know, crossing that. And we're talking about it afterwards, and it's almost like where you have a double-lane highway right now, and you have to turn off into it. You can cross the double, the double lines, but that's a little bit different, because you'd actually be in, in those double-lined areas. But the police department, they, in Lionel Lakes, which I think is where.
Yeah, it's, it's where I'm talking about, yes. And maybe that they're not consistent in doing it, but, but I think that if that's the case, then you'd really get inconsistency with how people used it, and, and if you're trying to avoid that whole suicide lane, I mean, you've got people who don't know what, what they're supposed to be doing, going 60 miles an hour in opposite directions, and, and especially if they don't know exactly where the driveway is that they're trying to, you know, turn into, oh, I just.
Yeah, it's a difficult problem to try to solve, because we, we don't have room to put in a frontage road, you know, system, and it's just, you know, the driveway access, that's, that's something that was done years ago. Nowadays, we'd probably get the right of way to put in a frontage road system for heavily, or a very important travel corridor, you know, for high-speed, longer trips.
Well, especially because of the number of trucks. I mean, I'm surprised when it says 400 a day, it's got to be more than that.
Yeah, that's what we counted on the one day we were out there.
Yeah.
It, it could certainly fluctuate with when semstone is making concrete and when they're knocked out.
Or with, yeah, I mean, because a lot of times, people, I mean, even vehicles, car vehicles, will use that as a bypass for whenever there's anything going on on the freeway that slows things down or.
I do really like the, the idea of that walking path, though, because I think that would at least remove the, or make it more safety with the people at least not walking on the shoulder. I don't know, it, there wasn't any statistics on any pedestrians that were hurt on that road?
There, in the whole study area, there was only one pet and bike crash, and that was at the Main Street signal, maybe six, seven years ago, so not too many.
Okay, good, thank goodness. My other question, what was my other question? Well, you definitely would make the ditches look nice and green like that.
They'd start nice and green.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you can control the water, you're hired.
Yeah, it's, at our very high-level screening of it, it, it's a challenge, because the road is, the whole area is very flat, some of the soils don't drain very well, so it'll be a challenge once we get into preliminary design, but. Some of the soils don't drain very well, so it'll be a challenge once we get into preliminary design, but...
Oh, I just remembered my other question. It says that the most accidents happen between Main Street and Pine Street, which is surprising to me because I've lived there for 35 years, and I don't know that I've ever seen an accident in that area. I've seen them between Pine and Kettle River.
Sure.
But just curious...
Yeah, I, I can't explain that. That's what the data from MINDOT and the Department of Public Safety told us. But it, I'd say they're more concentrated there, but they're, I guess that's only three-quarters of miles.
Yeah, it's not very long.
But I guess the Columbus segment, those other three miles of the study, it's, it's a little bit everywhere.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
I've got a question on this, this project. When it came out, we started, oh, years ago about the roundabout or whatever, down at Kettle River and Lake Drive. So this, is that a project that's kind of tied in with everything? Or is that a project that Anoka may look at doing prior to getting this thing all going?
That one, we do have that funded, the Kettle River, Roundabout at Lake, Lake Drive. That is funded, we will be constructing, I think, in 2027.
So this, the other corridor that you're talking about now will be after that, do you think, or? Would they do it all at once?
Yeah, Kettle River. Well, this study just goes from Main Street up to Kettle River.
Okay.
That was actually my, my point. What happens after Kettle River? So you've got this nice section, you're going to have a roundabout, you're going to close off the, the turn onto Kettle, or onto Camp Three. But what happens to Lake Drive after Kettle River?
Other study. Yeah, that's, that's a good question. And what we're trying to do now is always do a study before we do any hard engineering on it. So I think we'll do a study on that, too.
Is there going to be another open house?
Yes. Hopefully, in the next month, we'll look to schedule that soon and, yeah, see what the public thinks.
Will that be here again?
I believe so, yes.
And they do one down in Lino also, or?
Uh, no, we've been doing them joint together.
Okay. I remember the last one, I thought it was rigged.
You thought it was what?
Thought it was rigged. I just, no...
You've got to watch those people with the Post-it notes. I saw some of them stuffing the box with Post-it notes, so...
Yeah, I've seen one of them, little, younger, you know, aged kids.
We're aware of it. They're putting them on there. Handwriting, you know, the handwriting.
Yeah.
Either that or everybody gets one Post-it note when they walk in the door, and that's all you get.
You can't buy them either.
Yeah, and we have an interactive map on the website. People can leave comments there, too. But it's, it's not a completely democratic process. We take input, but at the end of the day, it's going to be engineering judgment and...
Yeah.
We want to certainly do something that meets the public approval.
Well, you could throw a stop sign every two blocks or whatever down there. That slows traffic up.
Well, the roundabout will slow a few, at least some of the trucks. They aren't going to be taking that at 60 miles an hour, but...
Yeah, they're very effective, as you probably know. Yeah, you can't go, really go any faster than 15 or 20 miles per hour through that and still make that curve.
Although, you know, we have had a few people just decide to sail over the top of them. So you might, you might find a few of those still down there, too.
Usually, their suspension probably go on their car, too, right?
Well, it doesn't, it, it, it's not so good about the traffic on the other side of it either, but...
Yeah, once they, if they do it once, they probably won't do it again.
No, once is enough.
Or it's broken.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I appreciate the update.
Kevin, do you have anything you want to add?
I have nothing.
All right. Thanks for coming. I'm glad we could get you a little bit earlier so you can go home on this beautiful evening.
See you at the end of April or May.
Yep.
Yeah. Jack, I don't know, do you want to, do you want to go to the, the Water System Improvement Study? Or should we do, should we just do, pardon?
Is Jesse online, or?
No, he was coming here. Oh, here he comes, yay! See, all you have to do is threaten that we're going to move on to the next, the next topic, and then the mayor shows up, so... No, no, no. You can have your gavel back. No, no, you're here. I can't, I can't be in charge when you're here. So we did, we did item four and item two. Now let's go back up to item one.
We do have a guest speaker for our water study, so if we wanted to move that one up, that would be...
Well, we also have people online that I promised we were going to do this first, so...
Very good.
I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to...
No problem.
I'm going to make you sit through this, sir.
All right. So we are moving on to...
Number one.
A review of city administrator's rating sheets, page one. Sue?
Well, Janet's going to kick it off.
Yep, I'm going to kick it off, and then Sue's going to go in for the kill at the, at the end. So there's a few handouts that you have, and some of these you received by email, and some of them you had received in prior city, city meetings. But I'm going to, we wanted you to have everything here. So you have a copy of the job description for the city administrator. You have a copy of the recruitment brochure. And you have a copy of the scoring sheet with a memo on the top that is from Sue. And what my job is, is to go over the sort of process and remind everybody of what is that we're trying to do. And we're going to have a discussion about a few items here and hopefully come to consensus on the action items that I outlined in the memo that we sent out on April, well, we sent it, dated it on April 9th, but you got it on Monday from Jack. So let's start, let's start at the beginning. So we, we started this search. You heard from us a few weeks ago that we went through the process of scoring all of the qualified candidates. There were 16, and we whittled that number down to six semifinalists. So now the next job for us is to whittle the semifinalists down to the finalists, and that's what this topic is about. And the way that we're going to do this is very similar to the way that we evaluated the candidates, the applicants, and whittled them down to the semifinalists. But since Sue and I were the ones that were doing this behind the curtain, and you guys weren't part of it, we needed to get you guys up to speed on what the process is. So that's why we're having this conversation. So if you look at the recruitment brochure and you go to page one, two, three, it has a section that says, "The ideal candidate will be", and then there's a number of bullet points there, which are qualifications of what we were hoping to find in our ideal candidate. Prior to that page, there's also core duties of the position, and these, these are also skills that we were looking for that they literally needed to be able to do in order for us to say that they were going to be qualified. We worked on a number of interview questions for the semifinalists and also interview questions that we will be using when we do an interview of the finalists. And we went over those today, and we're going to, our HR consultant is on her way back from Europe, and so she'll be looking at those also and weighing in on them. They're pretty close to being final. The interview questions are meant to elicit information related to how the candidate or the semifinalist fits these qualifications that are listed on this recruitment brochure. The recruitment brochure qualifications came right from the job description. They're a little bit easier to read on the recruitment brochure, but you have the job description, too, if you want to really dig into what, what the whole, what the whole position is defined as. So when you look at the score sheet, that's where all that information is coming from. In, in very broad terms, what happens is that you will have access to a OneDrive folder that will contain a folder for each of the semifinalists. In the semifinalist folder will be a copy of all their application materials, the video of their virtual interview with Ellen, a copy of their assessment results, and a summary from Ellen on interpreting those results, as well as her impressions from the interview. So you'll have all that. You will also have a copy of the interview questions. So as you watch the video, you can follow along. And Sue has done a really great job of labeling the questions so that you know on your score sheet which question ties to which score sheet, so you can write things down on the score sheet as you listen to the interview. So everything will be in that folder for you. You'll be able to access it, you'll be able to print it, download it, whatever you want to do at home, but, but that's, that's how you're going to get the information. And certainly Ellen is available if you have any questions. Sue and I are available if you have any questions. And the idea is that you would go through all of this, independently score your candidates, turn those sheets into Sue. Sue will tally them up, and it would be the top two to three candidates that we would move on to, to the finalists. So with that very brief overview, I'm going to turn it over to Sue, and she can talk more specifically about the score sheet.
Okay, thanks, Janet. Okay, so the score sheet that you're, and I'm not sure if you have all six of them, but...
No, just one.
Oh, okay, so you're going to, there are six pages. Every page is the same, except there's one for each candidate. So at the top, it says Candidate A, next one says Candidate B, and so on through F. And you will get an email on which candidate correlates to that letter, and so that'll all be done separately in an email.
And the folders are also labeled that way.
Just to talk a little bit about this whole scoring sheet, this actually is in a spreadsheet that I have drafted up. We did it with the initial candidates, and it's a weighted score. So we went through this whole process originally and have all these categories. We had a weight, we had a score, just like this. And then it all goes into the weighted formula in the spreadsheet and calculates out the, the total score for each candidate. So you're just seeing a picture of it because I didn't want to send you the spreadsheet, and it, it just can get all mucked up really, really quick, so... So just to go through the sheet, the top, the next thing down from the candidate is the score. So you'll see the numbers and then what each one identifies with. You know, minimal, minimally qualified, partially, mostly, fully, and exceptionally. So we're just going to, we'll talk about that more once we get into the, when you put it onto the sheet. So the first column is the category. The category is what Janet just explained in, from the brochure. It's those bullets that are under the ideal candidate. And some of them are kind of paraphrased a little bit. We modified them just a little bit to make them a little more understandable. But that is, so that's where that came from. That is the one that also, the questions that Janet mentioned are going to be in the interview, and we have numbered them, so you will see, and actually, I don't have the numbers on here, but those categories will be identified to which interview questions there are, so you can correlate them easily. The next column is the weight. So the weight is what the Personnel Committee has identified as the most important qualification through, and it won't say least important because it's not that the lower-scored ones are less important, but we felt like the ones that we weighted higher were attributes that you can't learn or find somewhere else. You know, like, for instance, you know, great leadership, good communication. Those types of things are, you, things you can't learn. And it has to be kind of an innate personality trait. So that's why we scored those higher. I'll just talk about the rest of the sheet, and then we're going to go back and talk about these individual ones just to see if you agree with the importance, the weight that we put on them. So the next column after the weight, and you won't have to do anything with that column once you're scoring. You just, that's just for your reference. The only area that you're going to enter information is in the third column, the score column. And that's where you're going to put your number from the top in that one score for each of those nine. And you're going to handwrite them, and that's what I'm going to put into the spreadsheet, okay? And then you can write your notes, and there's additional room at the bottom for notes. Let me just look at my notes here just to make sure. I wasn't going to mention something else before we talk about the weights.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I think we covered everything that I wanted to cover. So when we're talking about weights, at the top, we have the leadership, the great leadership and positive relationships, collaborative leader, able to establish positive and cooperative working relationships with elected officials, staff, and other public officials and the public. Any questions on that one, or should we just go down the line?
Well, I think, I think we can just ask if anybody has any questions about any of the categories. Like, are you unsure about what they actually mean? I can see by Ron's, Ron's ready to chomp at the bit to tell us all his questions.
Well, I, I, I don't know how to approach this, okay? I, I read over this, and I understand it kind of, but the first five categories sound like a job performance review for a person in a management position that you've worked with before. And I feel uncomfortable rating somebody that I haven't worked with, and I get a 15-minute or a 45-minute view on a TV or whatever of them. I think it's a hard ball to catch to say that they're great leadership and positive relationships in that 45 minutes. And I mean, maybe there's more other things in there. But before I get to that, I want to just ask these three questions. Does each member of the council have to sign their score sheet?
Do they have to sign them?
Yeah, or do we have to initial them? Do we have to do anything?
Well, you're going to give them, you're going to hand them in, so it's going to be probably clear who, who hands them to Sue. If you're asking if they're anonymous, no, they're not anonymous.
Okay, so is this public information?
It will be after everything is done.
After, so it's going to be the combined score that will be public information.
Okay, that score will be...
Yep, just the score, not the comments.
No, okay. And can members discuss this with other members, or is it just single? We're all alone in this when we do this. In other words, can a councilperson call another councilperson since I looked at this one?
I think the open meeting law pertains to this, so you can, one, can't do daisy chaining, can't have, can't have any unauthorized meetings without including the public.
Or you could talk, or you could talk to Ellen.
Yep. So if you have a question and you call me, you're fine. If you call me and then you call Sue, no.
Okay.
About the same thing, no.
Well, I looked, like I said, the first five kind of caught me, like, I'm not trained in HR, okay? So I was trained as a police officer, so I can judge people, but I can't, I don't know if I can judge a great communicator unless I watch the, the video and see that, well, they're talking pretty good, you know?
Well, no, no, no. The, the, the questions are crafted so that they should answer these, these, they, they should be giving examples or answering the question in such a way that you will be able to say, "Wow, yeah, I'm impressed by that." Or, "Hmm, I'm not so sure about that, they didn't answer." And, and that's why you have these different, these different scores. And you've got kind of in parentheses, your, your level of confidence with that. I think that's, that's what... I think that's, that's what really helped me. So if you look on the very first page of Sue's memo, unsure. So if you, if you're looking at the questions that pertain to the leadership, and after hearing the interview, and looking at their resume, and their cover letter, and their references, and the skills assessment, you're going, I don't know, I'm really, I'm not convinced, then you're an unsure, 20. Or maybe you're a little bit more than unsure, maybe you're like, kind of questionable, but you know, more than just a 20, then you're a 50. So you're, I mean, it's not a perfect system, no interview is, and that uncertainty that you're feeling is the same uncertainty you feel every time you're interviewing somebody. I mean, there's, it's not, it's not a science.
Well, I understand it, but like, problem solver, I mean, that's a pretty, I mean, I don't, you know?
I think you'll feel better when you see the questions.
Yeah, and I do have one comment, so, and I totally understand when you don't do this a lot, that it's, it doesn't come easily, but we want your feedback. So I would say just give it your best try, and after, after we are done with the scoring, and somebody is way off from everybody else, as we can take a look and say, well, did you look at this, or did you look at that? We're going to talk about it, so.
In a public meeting after everything is entered in?
So this is before we get to the two or the three?
Yes.
Yes, this is how we get to the two or three.
This is to whittle it down to two or three.
Yeah, this, so, so when it comes to picking the one from the two or the three, you will be interviewing them in person, the whole council will be interviewing them in person. And they will also meet with the staff, and have a chance to be questioned by the staff, and the public will also have an opportunity to, to watch the interviews, and meet them, and greet them, and ask them questions and things.
So the Personnel Committee went through this list with all 16 people to start with, so you scored all those people?
Yes, sir.
So are you going to rescore them again now?
Because the questions are different. We didn't, we didn't have interview questions, we just scored them according to the categories and what was on paper. All we had was what was on paper. So we basically did an assessment first to say, did they meet our minimum qualification? And I think three did not, and the rest, of all the, you know, applications we got, three did not, and the rest of them did. And of the ones that met our minimum qualifications, then we scored them, and we looked at my top six and Sue's top six, and there were, there was concordance with most of them, but there was a couple where there wasn't. We talked about it, and we agreed on what the top six should be. But all we had, all we had to go on was the applications, the resumes, the cover letter, that's all we had. So that's as good a job as we could do on these things. And then there were some of these where we couldn't. I mean, they didn't address it, and you couldn't really pull it off, so that was the, that was ones that got, everybody got 20.
Well, that's, I look at it, and I, I look at the scoring you got there, the weight of it, the twenties, 20 twenties. Why, I, I understand the goal is you want someone, I mean, you want somebody that's a great leadership, a real knowledge, whoever he or she is, you want him to be the best out of the group, but sometimes it's hard looking at that, and if you're putting such a heavy load on one topic that they're a great leader, if you don't have it right, you gave a lot of percentage to this one, down here at the bottom, they might know every law and order of procedures of everything you've got to do in the elections and everything else, and they get a littler one. And I just don't see how that levels out sometimes. If you want a whole person, I mean, it's great to have it all, and maybe this, this video will answer all those questions I have, but I just think 20 is a lot.
And I think that's why we're talking about it, so if you feel like these weights aren't quite what they should be, we should talk about it. And if we, you know, and if you have a, you know, if you think leadership should be 15 or 10, or whatever, let's talk about it, because that's why we're doing this, is that we, you know, we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the way that we're proposing. This is, this is the Personnel Committee's recommendation, but that doesn't mean that has to be what we go with.
What, does this sound ridiculous, to put everything at an equal, like 15, 15, 15? Because if you're wrong on one thing really bad, and everybody else sees something different, I mean...
We could, then we would take the weight out and just do an average score.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something to think about.
I just, I just look at it, because I'm putting maybe too much emphasis on that first two, and the process improvement, time management, you know, I just, I see a lot of weight on that, and I, I figured, I got to watch what I write here, because I could, I could say, well, I don't think they have anything, but they sure have everything else.
Mm-hmm. Well, so I think you're bringing up really good points, and part of the purpose of the discussion is to force us to kind of come in our own heads, what are the most important attributes? So what is it that we're looking for? Because different cities probably need city administrators with different strengths, right? So if you're Columbus, what is it that is most important for Columbus? And if you're, you know, Blaine, maybe it's really different in Blaine. So, so again, from our discussion, this is kind of how we felt, and if you look at the leadership and the process improvement, time management, or I think in the parentheses is what makes this really important, is you fix what's wrong. We know that there are, there's a real lack of documentation, and policies and procedures that are written, and things like that, and that needs to be fixed, that needs to be a priority. So if you have a candidate that, that's not one of their strong suits, that's going to be really hard to fix, if that's not what they are good at, or have had a lot of experience doing. So, you know, when we came up with this, we really tried to think about, at least from our perspective, what are the areas that are the most important for us to have greatness in? And if you're, you know, well-versed with the laws, rules, and regulations, of course that's important, but we also have city attorneys that can help us with that kind of stuff, so you have some kind of, you know, backup expertise. You know, you've got engineers that know the rules and the laws related to that, you've got, you know, Jim that knows the rules and the regulations related to his area, and so you've got, you've got some backup in those areas. There's only one leader, and there's only one person that sets the tone for this office, and there's only one person that sets the tone for interacting with the public and with the council. And so I think that, that was in our mind why we, we did those more heavily, but it doesn't have to be the numbers we put down.
Yeah, or we could shrink the range a little bit, so we went, I mean, these are, you know, we could make them all so they're just five points apart.
Well, I look at the last one for five points down there, and I'm looking at it, oh, other than looking at the resume, kind of, and seeing what, what's going on there, kind of, it's...
It's one of the questions that they're answering. So if you're asked a question, how do you keep up with everything, and they go, well, I don't know.
I wing it.
I wing it, I talk, or, you know, I read, I read...
Those are nice, easy ones, then.
There are some, there are some pretty straightforward questions, and then there are some harder questions, but every one of these has at least one question that will give you a sense of where they're coming from. And some of them have multiple, the ones that are the higher score ones have multiple questions. So I think, I think once you see the questions, once they're finalized, it might give you a little bit more comfort, and probably once you start doing it, it's like, okay, now I get it. It's really hard to conceptualize it if you haven't done it before, but, but you're bringing up really good points, and this is why we're, why we're having this conversation. And I don't know, you know, I'm not going to be able to see if Rob raises his hand, so you might need to go to your other screen that shows who's, who's on there, so in case he has something he wants to weigh in on, or I should say...
Yeah, Janet, actually, I did for a little bit, but that's, that's A-OK. One of the, one of the things I was just thinking about is, you know, someone that's able to delegate, and is not having reviewed the questions right now, is there something about how, how well do you delegate, like work down to the people that, and trust that the people underneath you would do a good job at it? Is there some form of question like that, Janet?
It's kind of underneath these categories, but yeah, there are, there are questions that'll get to that.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, that's important, and the, and the biggest thing is just communication skills, because that person's working with every aspect of our, our community and our governmental agency there. If there's friction, or if someone doesn't communicate well, that's, that might not be a good thing, right?
Yeah, no, that'll be important.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
How about you? I know you, you have to transition from state government to local government.
Well, I have never, I've never done the weighted thing before, so...
And you don't have to.
You just have to score them.
You just have to score, we'll, just understand it.
Correct. The way you guys weighted it. And I have nothing to say. We'll give her a shot.
So, so let's go back, so the action items that I had outlined here was reviewing the remaining steps and timelines. So we didn't talk about the timeline. One of the things that we're going to do at tomorrow's meeting is to set the date for the special meeting, that we actually choose the semifinalists. The interviews are happening next week on Monday and Tuesday, and then Ellen will get them set up to do the assessment, and they'll probably have like five days or so to do the assessment. And then we will get all of that into the folders for you, and you'll have somewhere around a week to get through all of that, maybe a little bit longer, depending on what the date is of the special meeting, but there'll be, there'll be a time period defined for you to go through and look at everything and score everything, get them to Sue, we'll number crunch it, and then it'll be available to discuss at that special meeting. So the special meeting will probably be sometime around the middle of May, second, third week in May, depending on what we decide tomorrow night.
So what will we discuss? All six candidates, or the two or three top?
We'll come back with the answers to who are the two, top two or three, and they will not be discussed by name, they will be discussed by their letter.
Yeah.
And if, and you'll have all the information, and so if you're looking at that and going, nah, I'm not, I don't think so, and we'll talk about it, because sometimes the numbers aren't the only answer.
But by the time we discuss as a group, it'll be down to two or three?
No.
No?
That's what we're going to decide on that special meeting.
Okay.
You're going to get all the information from the six, and you're going to see how they rank, so there'll be a number, and you'll see from the top to the bottom of those six, how they rank, and if everybody's happy with, yeah, the top two or the top three are the ones that we want to go with, then we're done. If you're looking at that list and you're going, this isn't the whole picture, those might be the top numbers, but there's more to think about that wasn't captured, that's totally legitimate. So, so don't worry that, oh, if you write this down, and, and you end up, you know, the top person isn't the top person you really think should be it, and none of us do, then they're not. This is really just a way to help distill down a lot of information that you're getting, and it, but it's not, it's not hard and fast. It's, it's a guidance. Does that make you feel any better?
I watch Jeopardy a lot, so...
But I don't know what that means.
Well, what it means is, you know, they only give you a little bit, and you got to figure it out.
We're not going to ask you to, to frame it in the, in the way of a question, is that what you're worried about?
No, I just, I just don't, I, if the information's there, I'll be happy. Problem is, I'm worried that I won't see it, and I, I just don't know how to judge somebody on leadership if I have no history, other than an application and a comment they made for, because they got, well, how many categories, we got seven?
Nine.
Nine, nine categories, so if you got a question for each one...
No, we got, well, we have multiple questions for some of them.
Right, and you got a 45-minute period, we're looking at a time period that, that so, you got five minutes on leadership or something, and I got to make a decision on how to score that. That's what I'm looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And anybody could throw a score number down.
Well, and you know, part, part of what will be nice, too, for the, for the meeting, the special meeting, is that you will hear what everybody else is saying, and I know, and when Sue and I, and Megan and Ellen went through this the first time, some of the stuff that Sue picked up on, or some of the stuff that I picked up on weighed in on like, oh, yeah, you're right, that, that probably makes more sense, I didn't think about that. So we, we were able to augment, you know, information that one or, one or the other may not have missed, or may have interpreted differently, and so there's going to be five of us who are, who are going to have all this in front of us. You're going to know how you felt about your, your scoring, and you'll be able to say, well, the reason I gave that person this, this score was because, you know, this is how they answered this, and then, and it's like, wow, you're right, I missed that, yeah, okay, I agree with, I agree with what you're saying.
And this is open to the public, this whole discussion?
Yes, yep. It won't be with names, though, it'll just be with A, B, C, D, E, F.
Well, I guess we just go with it.
So I'm hearing that the steps and the timeline sound okay to everybody?
Yep.
Yep, okay. And, and it sounds like the, the score sheet, the way that we're presenting it, you're not coming up with something that, that changes it, you're okay with going with it the way it is?
Well, I'm not happy with it, but I'm just one person, there's four others here.
Well, do you have, do you have things you'd want, I mean, do you have suggestions for how to change it?
Well, I just think the 20s on those first, where do I have it? I don't know what anybody else's opinion on it, I mean, I just...
Rob, did you get a chance to look at the, the weights?
No, I did not. When, when was that email sent? I don't, I'm looking at my email right now.
Yes, was it yesterday?
Monday.
Monday.
Well, it came from Sue.
Okay.
So we can, maybe they want to think about it for one day and just email back to us that part, and it would only be the weights that we would potentially modify?
Well, if you people, if you think it's, I shouldn't say you people, but if you think that's, this thing will open my eyes watching it, I'll go along. I mean, I think they're important, and they are the top important things, but I just don't, I don't know if we all catch the importance of it compared to down at the bottom, an active learner. So the only thing I can see about active learners, if a question is, do you go to school much, or do you, do you see a class, oh, yeah, I go to, you know, that's easy to pick up, and it's easy to look at their, their resume, and see what they've attended, or whatever, but I just, look, it's a lot up on something I don't know.
Well, I think the one thing, too, is that as you look at the top ones, they're the ones that are harder to assess, they have the higher scores, because they're not so black and white. It's unlikely that you're going to get 90s and 100s there, you're going to get the, the lower numbers, so when you think of 20% of 50 or 70, and then compared to the ones on the bottom, which are pretty black and white, where they're probably going to get the higher scores, then the, then the, the actual numbers aren't, the number differences aren't as great as it looks when you just look at the weighting. So if you get 100 on, on one that's only 5%, they get five points. If you get a 50 on one that's 20%, they get, what, 10 points? Am I doing my math right?
I'd have to look at my calculated spreadsheet.
Yep.
But then again, if great leadership and positive relationships, if they just stand out, you know, as a good communicator, answering the question, they would get a high score.
Right, but then they probably are, and that would be a good thing for us, wouldn't it?
We keep it the way it is, though.
Hey Janet, I've got a question on, I did find that email, it came from Sue and Jack, but, so were you saying that it would be a weighted average, or that number would be the number, like the total of all their questions, and then that's the number that advances them forward?
It'll be, it'll be a weighted score, and then we'll average the five weighted scores to be able to get a number for each candidate, and then we'll rank them from the highest to the lowest.
Okay. What, what is the reason for that, versus just the, just the straight score itself? Because I do something similar at work, I, where we're doing a lot of interviews, I'm actually doing tomorrow, but it's, it's like a, it's a 100-point system, axioma questions, and then whoever gets... Then they just, that's hard to go for, is that similar? It's just, I'm trying to understand the, the weighted portion.
You're probably going to have to repeat that, because you broke... You're probably going to have to repeat that, because you broke up when you said it.
I think I understood. You did break up a lot, but the reason for the weight is because the importance of some of the qualifications are just more important than some of the other ones. So, we want to weight those heavier.
It's still a hundred point system, though.
Yes.
So, so at the end of the day, if you were, if you were a hundred on all of these, you'd get a score of a hundred.
Okay, let's do a little, let's do a practice run. Okay, we're all voting for Ron, and we all give him a hundred, right?
Yep.
So, I say a hundred, you say a hundred, he says a hundred, you say a hundred, Rob says a hundred.
Okay.
So far?
That's for the first one.
So, then he gets twenty points for that.
So, he gets twenty points.
Yep.
So, that's as full a score as you can get.
That's the best score he can get on that first category.
Okay, so let's go down to great communicator, fifteen.
Yep.
So, we got a fifteen, a fifteen, that's thirty, forty-five, sixty, seventy-five. With Ron, if we all vote fifteen.
No, so, we're not, we're not adding up each of those. At the, you're, you're adding them up individually, and at the bottom, let's say at the bottom, Ron ends up with seventy-five. So, you add up, he got twenty on the top, he got fifteen on the, on the next one, he got fifteen on the next one, oop, he bombed out on the problem solver, he's not a very good problem solver. So, I mean, so you add up, you add up all this, all the scores, because you're using these scores on the top of the sheet, those are the scores that you can, you can put in those categories, and then they're multiplied by, instead of a weight of twenty, it'd be twenty percent.
Which one are you on, Janet? The first one or the second?
And, so, look at the, look at the score sheet, and you see at the top, these are the scores that you can choose from, and what they mean. So, if, if Ron is a great leader, he gets a hundred in that, in that score, he gets twenty points, because twenty percent of a hundred is twenty points.
Yeah.
Okay? So, in the next one, process improvement, let's say he's really good at that, too. He gets a hundred there, so he gets twenty points there. Now, he's got forty points total. Then he gets to great communicator at all levels, fifteen. He's only a twenty there. We weren't, we weren't convinced that he is a great communicator. So, fifteen percent of twenty, I don't know, what is it? Five, three, something?
Five, yeah.
Yeah, ten, yep.
So, so you start adding all those scores up, and out of one hundred points, let's say Ron ends up with seventy-five.
So, we go down the whole page, and we, you come up with your number.
Yep.
At the bottom, you got a total.
Yep. You won't, so what, what you're going to do is, you're just going to come up with the scores.
Yep.
Sue's going to enter it in, and it's going to calculate the points.
Yep.
At the bottom, it will be a number, like seventy-five, or fifty-five, or whatever the number is, right?
Or ninety, or a hundred.
So, so let's say, let's say when, when you do Ron, you got seventy-five at the bottom.
Yeah.
When I did Ron, I only gave him fifty.
Good.
When Sue did it, she was somewhere in between us, she gave him a sixty.
Good.
When Rob did it, he, he's like, ah, I'm not so sure about that guy, I only given him a forty. Those numbers all get added up, divided by five, that's the average.
Yep.
That's the number that you'll see when we get together on the, on the May whatever, for the special meeting. You will see that number for each of the six candidates.
Hold it. So, you see that number, you guys see it, and then you divide it by fifteen?
Nope.
The spreadsheet's going to calculate out what the, the total score is for each candidate.
Yep.
And then the personnel committee is going to take those five scores for each candidate and average it.
Average them.
Just do a basic average. So, then each candidate will have our average score by our five people.
So, then there will be six average scores. And let's say the six average scores go from seventy-five to forty.
Yeah.
So, let's say the scores are seventy-five, sixty, fifty, fifty, and forty.
Yeah.
So, the top two are seventy-five and sixty. Now, we'll look at those and say, are those really the top two that we want as our finalists? Let's say that we all agree on that, we're done. If, if Ron looks at it and goes, wait, 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 how in the world did we get seventy-five for that first person? Here's what, here's what I saw, and Sue goes, gosh, I missed that. Yeah, you're right, I, I would probably change mine then. And then, so we say, oh, you know, maybe that top one really isn't a good fit for us. Now, we might go down to the, you know, the sixty and the fifty guy, or gal.
And move them up.
Yep. So, so, again, this is, this is just helping us kind of sort through a lot of information and put it in some, uh, logical order to discuss it. And when you, when you have it all in front of you, you will have everything in front of you, and you can sit back and go, yep, this, I'm really comfortable with this, or you can say, I'm not, because here's, you know, here's what I saw, here's what I heard, this is what I know, and, and we'll consider it. And the reason I'm saying two or three is because if you end up with, you know, someone who's really clearly the top, and then two people that are like one point apart, you know, we may want to say, okay, we're, you know, that's not enough to really separate these two. So, so that's, that's, that's the process.
So, real, real quick, we, you could go like fifty-five, or seventy-five.
I knew you were going to ask that. Can you, we, just stick with the numbers that Sue gave you. Because what's, you know, what's, what's a fifty, you know, we've got those defined.
Fifty-three?
I don't know what a fifty-three point four means. Talk about wanting to make it complicated.
Well, and Ron, you're right. When you're just watching a video, or short interview, or whatever, you never know. I mean, that's like a first date. But once we go through it all, whittle it down, and then you can ask any question you want.
Then, then.
With the last two, or three.
Yes, yes. And that'll give us a, a much better idea.
What would you do if somebody wants a dog license, and there's a tornado coming, and Christmas is right around the corner?
You go Christmas shopping. There we go.
That's why you should be the city administrator, Ron.
I think you're right, though. I think all five of us, we're all going to come up with something, and when it gets merged together, it'll work out. It's the best you got, best system.
Mm-hmm. Well, the only, like, we talked about it today, if, if we didn't do it this way, everybody's going to have their own idea of why they picked the person that's at their top. And it could be one of a hundred things. So, we're just trying to get commonality and consensus on, on the city council, so we can at least all be approaching it the same.
And you're right that this looks a lot like a performance review, that's on purpose, because you, you know, you have a job description that says, here are the jo, here are the responsibilities or the duties of this person, this is what they're going to be held accountable for, so you better pick somebody who's got the qualifications to do them. That's the, that's the point.
And everybody goes through this process. Everybody that hires somebody, that's all they got, is the resume, the interview, and if they know something else that's about the person.
I, I, I don't know. I guess you could call their employer and get a little.
We will, we'll have references on the finalists.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. You answered all my questions.
Thank you. So, there's no action to be taken tonight. It was really just a discussion to make sure that we were all on the same page moving forward, and unless, Rob, do you have any other questions?
Um, I see, I just came off you. Just, uh, no, I, I trust that you put this together, I know both you and Sue work in managerial rules and stuff, so I trust that you put a good set of questions together. So, thanks, both of you.
And I'll just also add that we had the city attorney and the HR consultant, who's been with us every step of the way, so it's not just Sue and I, it's, it's those two also, so.
Yeah, well, thanks to them as well.
Okay, then we're done. We can move on to the next, the next topic.
Are we on the lake drain corridor study, or the water system study?
Water system.
All right, Kevin, you're up. Thank you for waiting.
All right, thank you. So, I'll do a little introduction here, and Jim may want to chime in with any additional information, and then we're going to turn it over to Brian. Just to back up a little bit, we, we initiated this study back in August, and that was a result of Jim's desire to analyze the water system in more detail, number one, from an operational standpoint, but also from a water quality standpoint. So, we, we put together a proposal that was approved by the city council, and our environmental group has been engaged in putting together the study, and we will, in the end, have a written bound report summarizing all of these issues in detail. And so, back in August, you met Seth Peterson, Brian Golden has been involved in this study, and has basically put together the bulk of the report, and he has put together a PowerPoint to review with you. Brian is a principal engineer in our environmental group, and has lots of experience in doing these kinds of projects, both for, for cities of this, very similar to Columbus. And so, Jim, I don't know if you wanted to add anything at this point, or?
I, I won't right now. I'll let him go through his spiel, and then I'll answer any type of questions, or just offer some thought processes on why we really got here.
So, Brian.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Good evening, mayor and council. I did have hard copies here, did anybody need one?
I would love one, thank you.
I'll take one. I'll take them. Thank you. So, I, I thought you may, may want to jot some notes. I was going to say, you, you're maybe looking forward to an easy conversation, and maybe this one won't be that, because usually when I'm here, things are.
Will it be easier than the one we just had?
You know, well, I'll let you guys be the judge, so, but I want to give you an opportunity to take some notes, because the, the slideshow itself is, is simplified down, because there can be a lot of information here, and I'm hoping to just communicate that verbally with you, rather than having a, a bunch of words on the screen. But we are going to be talking about your water system, both in terms of, of distribution and quality, and some of the concerns that, that are there with the water system. So, so there we are on that slide. So, just a few of the things we're going to run through is the, the kind of the purpose of the study, looking at historical water usage, looking at water quality, and then getting into a review of the existing needs of the system, some treatment alternatives, any preliminary cost evaluation, and then a timeline, so as we step through. So, starting with the purpose, one of the main purposes of kind of the overall study is, is getting applications in for funding. And so, in the state of Minnesota, there's the Public Facilities Authority that funds drinking water projects, and there are applications due on a yearly basis to get on the initial funding list. That due date is coming up in early May, and so, one of the efforts of this study is to get on the list for funding. Now, it is important to get on the list, but I want you to realize, getting on the list does not require you to do any work, and you also have the flexibility to change course on the direction you may want to go with the project. And so, we will be moving forward to get you on that funding list, based on the discussions tonight, but most of all, want to provide the flexibility for you to make future decisions regarding the water system, and have that funding available. So, that's one of the primary things with this study, and then giving you guys some background on the system, the concerns that are there, the costs associated with some of the alternatives for addressing those concerns. We can go to the next slide. So, just a quick look at historical water usage over the last five years. You can see there in 2020, there was a dip because of the pandemic and the shutdown of commercial industrial users in your system. So, you, we definitely saw a dip in 2020. But if we, we took that dip out, you can see a general trend upward in the yearly water usage across your system, and that is expected to continue going forward with, with added growth to the system. So, that's yearly water usage, and then each subsequent graph here is going to get a little bit more detailed. So, this slide shows a monthly average water use, and you can see those peaks and valleys throughout the year, and because of the commercial industrial use, you see more of a seasonal change over time for water usage. So, when you look at the graph there, you're going to notice that during the winter months, flows are lower. Obviously, there's also no irrigation and things like that going on, and then you see the peaks during the summer. And then, the next graph gets a bit more detailed, and this is kind of the daily usage. And so, one of the important things we're looking at on the daily usage is what are the maximum day usage? And as you look at this graph, you're seeing the maximum days between two and three hundred thousand gallons per day, and there's some, with the existing system and how things are monitored, there's some discrepancies in that daily usage, and so, we're going to dig a little bit deeper into that to make sure we're on the same page of staff on what those exact peaks are, because as we've dug into some things, we've realized that because of the monitoring over the weekend, and sometimes the data is collected Mondays and not through the weekend, to make sure we've gotten rid of any of those spikes that are actually spikes in the system. Because that, that peak day will become important when we start talking about treatment alternatives that you may consider, of what a treatment plant would be sized for, if that was needed. So, just a general overview, and, and when it comes to, I realize sitting here that I didn't add the future flows to this, and I apologize for that, but basically, over the twenty-year design period, we'd be, be looking about doubling the existing peak flows. So, if we're in the two to three hundred thousand gallon range, we're in that five to six hundred thousand gallon range over the next twenty years. So, as we plan improvements, that would be the design year that we're looking at, 2044. The next graph is the same data we just saw, but what's added to this is your current well capacity. And so, there are two lines shown. There's a firm well capacity, and that is your, your capacity with the largest well out of service, and then the orange line at the top would be the total wells. And so, what, what you want as a u, as a system would be your firm capacity to always be greater than your peak day. And what's shown here is you have a lot of excess capacity in the wells, because of the size of those wells. So, in general, the concept here is you do not have any capacity concerns. Your existing wells are much bigger than what you would need to meet your demands. So, going to the next slide, water quality. As you see on this table, there's a couple parameters on here, and this'll be a little bit deeper discussion on this slide. And so, we have two parameters on here, one is manganese, and one is iron. Historically, these compounds did not have any health risks associated with them, but they do cause staining. So, you'll see brown or black staining from iron and manganese. And the concentrations you have of iron and manganese in your wells would likely cause some of those color complaints coming. Recently, EPA has been looking into manganese and potential health-related risks with manganese, and they have set guidelines for health advisory guidelines for manganese. The interesting thing right now is these are not mandated, so there is no requirement to meet them, but they do have some health guidelines. So, it's a, it's an interesting place right now, because there is public information about potential health risks, but there is no requirement to meet these levels. But if you see that in the MDH health risk limit, there is a point one for infants, less than one-year-old, and then a point three for adults and children. And if you look at your wells, if you, if you average these out, you are above both the infant and the adult level for manganese. The iron, the standard for iron there is a secondary standard, which is purely based on aesthetics, so above point three, you may have staining complaints and dirty water complaints. And so, your iron is kind of hovering right around that level. It is high enough that it would likely cause some staining issues. But, but jumping back to the manganese item, this is one of, one of the items in the report that's critical, along with the water tower, which we'll get into, is the consideration for possible treatment. To address manganese in the water, you would need to add a treatment facility to do that. In the current funding through the state, they do offer grants for manganese treatment. The, as it was currently constituted, it was a fifty percent grant up to three million dollars.
Can you say that again?
Is a fifty percent grant up to three million.
Oh, okay.
So, you, you'd have a fifty percent share, and then the max was three million. And that's what was currently funded in the legislature. Any funds that were in the program for it? Any funds that were in the program for it are already spoken for. So, future funds would be based on the legislature continuing to fund that program. So, I think we'll... I guess, is there any questions? Let me just pause there, I guess, on the manganese item. We can come back to discussions on that, but any questions?
I just have, I'm not even sure. I thought manganese was good for you, but maybe not at this level.
Right. So, all, most minerals, right, have some health benefits too. And so, right, in the state or even EPA-wise, this has not been regulated ever as a drinking water standard. The first Safe Drinking Water Act was in the 70s. So, this has never been regulated. So, there's new research that it could have neurological impacts. And so, like a lot of things, I guess moderation is good and excess can be detrimental. And so, this is one of the new items.
Is magnesium, is that hard on equipment?
What happens with both iron and manganese is that they precipitate into a solid. And so, like manganese, you might notice in your toilet bowls, more so in the water tank because it takes a while for it to turn into a particulate. When it comes out of the ground, it's dissolved in the water, so the water's clear. But then as it's aerated or mixed with chlorine or other things, it precipitates out. So, I actually have manganese at my house and where I see it is in the tanks in my toilets. If I take them off, I'll have a black layer in the bottom that builds up. So, you can get accumulation in water heaters and things like that. You can get clothes staining. You know, if you have sprinkler systems and they spray on the house, all of a sudden you see these lines where the sprinkler's been hitting the house because it's getting brown. So, in terms of equipment, stuff that is sensitive to those type of solids, but I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say you have a lot of it like in your home or anything that's going to cause problems with.
I just wondered if they have to clean a water tower or anything like that that sits with it.
So, currently, the way your system tries to handle that is there's a chemical added that tries to keep the manganese and iron dissolved. So, it kind of ties it up to prevent it from becoming a solid. But that only lasts for maybe 24 to 48 hours. So, if that water isn't used quick enough, it'll start to come out of solution and make a solid that's going to cause staining. So, right now, that's kind of how it's dealt with, but that doesn't remove it. So, from a consumption standpoint or health impact, it doesn't really impact it because it's still in the water.
What is that chemical?
It's a phosphate compound. And phosphate can do a couple things. It's also corrosion inhibitor. So, if you were tuned into the Flint, Michigan item, you may have heard about a phosphate. That was a different scenario because it was being used to protect piping from corrosion. It has a couple different purposes. I just want to throw that out there in case you've heard it before and you're like, oh, Flint, Michigan. No, different purpose.
And is there any kind of guidelines? How many glasses of water you have to drink a day to have a problem?
So...
With the manganese?
I don't know if there's anything specific on that one. Normally, what it's based on is an adult drinking a liter a day. Well, I shouldn't say an adult. In this case, there's infants. So, I don't know about the infants, but I know other health risks are usually based on an adult drinking a liter a day. And usually, the guidelines are set at an extended period of that consumption. But here, we have the infants and so, obviously, that's not going to be an extended period because it changes after a year. So, unfortunately, I don't know the details behind how they developed those standards. I shouldn't say standards, advisory levels.
Because that'd be a lot of water for a one-year-old to be drinking?
Right. So, they must have based that on what a normal infant would be drinking, I assume, in a...
Well, if they make it in the formula.
Formula, right.
Yeah. It could be a liter. I mean, if they drank six bottles a day and they're making it, they're making it themselves with the water, with the powder formula. So, I have a question on the slide above that.
Sure.
Back to the historical water usage where it shows, so it's our numbers from the previous slide and then showing what our capacity is.
Yep.
And it looks like we have a lot of capacity, even though our numbers are going to go up. How far can we go up until it gets...
So, that green line of the 1.7 MGD, that's firm capacity. So, if you lose your biggest well, that's what you still have left is, that's the line you want to stay below. And so, the 2044 projection, I apologize for not putting it on here, is about double the current capacity. So, you're at about maybe .6. So, you're still barely at 30% of what your current well capacity is, such that even in the report, we looked out to 2075 even and, you know, a lot could change and you could have big users come in, but you're projected to have capacity available for a long time.
And that was one of the reasons why we did, we're doing the study, kind of looking at capacity?
So, one of the big reasons, and I, which I haven't gotten to yet, is the, I guess, lack of a water tower. And so, right now, you have a pumped system. And so, maybe most of you are on like home wells. And so, in your home well, this is the best way I can probably communicate it, is that in your home, you have a pressure tank somewhere in the basement. A lot of times, they're a blue tank and your well pumps into that and that tank has a bladder in it and it pressurizes. And then as you use water, that bladder goes down and once it gets to a low enough pressure, your well pump needs to kick on to fill that tank again. And so, that's kind of how your system operates now, except you have three of those that are, were separated and now they're kind of connected and they're kind of just fighting each other, I guess is the best way to put it.
If you want information on that, I can kind of go over that. But, I mean, you kind of hit it in a nutshell. We have three, I'm going to call it three systems. So, we have wellhouse 2-3, which is by Priner's Preserve. We have wellhouse 1, which is by Freeway Mini Storage. And then we have the Ziegler Water Tank, which is down by Ziegler. All three of those systems came on at different times. So, they all hypothetically work together, but individually. So, we have a pressure pump system. We have a air-over-water system, which is similar to what you guys have at home. It's not a bladder tank. It's just literally air-over-water. And then we have a pressure system. They all work differently. They can all come on at the same time for different reasons. So, our system, it works. It's got us this far. We incrementally put different things on, which makes it extremely difficult to operate. So, if running aces, which you see those peaks in there, running aces causes a lot of peaks for us because they're filling a pool or they're filling their water truck to wet the track. So, that creates a high demand for us, which is hard on our system because we don't have that water tower capacity, which creates pressure in our system. We have to make pressure. So, if we have that high demand at running aces, the closest well to that's going to kick on. There's no capacity there that is solely operated off of, there's a demand, I need to supply it. So, now wells turn on because that demand is very quick. So, we go from, call it 60 PSI to 40 PSI really quick because you suck that water right out of the system. Now, that wellhouse says, oh, boy, there's something going on here. I need to react. Both wells are going to kick on. Now, we're pumping 2,000 gallons a minute or 2,100 gallons a minute at a very high rate of speed to try to supply that. And then as that works its way down to wellhouse 1 and Ziegler Pump House, I kind of took Jack on a tour today, so he kind of got some idea on what it is, then those things start to incrementally react too. So, once all of that stuff starts to work, now we're potentially pumping, you know, 2,500 gallons a minute, 3,500 gallons a minute, and then that water stops. And now, you're pumping that kind of supply into the system and there's nowhere for it to go. So, it really screws with our system, which makes it very difficult to operate. And I get that I threw a lot of stuff out there and I am willing to take anybody on a field trip to kind of show them what it is. You can't really see what I explained, but I can show you when each one came on and kind of how they operate individually, but kind of work together. So, the three very different systems that we've molded together over time to try to get to where we are today.
Okay.
Just to summarize that, we do have a water system, but essentially, it's three different types of facilities that are comprised of semi-compatible components that don't always operate in concert at different times of demand. So, it does place a lot of stress and strain on the operation of the system and it's not the ideal setup. And again, too, one of the big issues is lack of storage capacity. So, we're essentially dependent on drawing water up from the well to meet demand rather than having storage. One thing in water and sewer systems, your best friend is gravity. And gravity comes from tanks for the water system and from sewer system, it's essentially more or less based on, you either have the topography to do it or you don't.
So, don't we have a tank at Ziegler, a storage tank at Ziegler?
We do. But, so herein lies the problem. The tank is at the south end of the system where we have virtually no users and the high demand is on the north end. So, when that high demand kicks in, imagine, I'm going to take a stab because I haven't calculated, but between running aces and the Ziegler Pump House, I'm going to say there's somewhere between 200,000 and 500,000 gallons of water in the line, okay? Because, I mean, it kind of ventures off all over the place. By the time they open a well and the Ziegler Pump House senses that loss, wellhouse 2-3 is already dropped from 70 PSI to 30 or 40. Well 1, which is kind of in the middle of those two, is dropping pressure at a rapid rate of speed. And then that system down there sees it because it's so far away that that one says, oh, boy, something's going on here. I need to start pumping 2, which is why I say they all turn on and now I have this high demand of water trying to supply running aces or a fire hydrant or, you know, some higher demand, you know what I mean? If people are flushing toilets or running their sinks or filling a bathtub, you don't see that crazy flow, you know what I mean? And the pressure drops really slow, but that's not indicative of what we see, especially in the spring, summer, and towards fall because of how our system operates. So, that's the dilemma, right? We have some water capacity and don't take that as a water tower because that's just above-ground storage. It's not water tower. So, it doesn't create pressure in the system. We have pumps to help create that pressure.
Right.
But it's so far away. If that system was right next to running aces, it would work 1,000 times better than it does. And it gives us capacity. So, if there was a building that was on fire and their fire suppression started kicking on and that demand starts and it runs for a long period of time, our system levels out and then everything starts to manage back. But when you lose pressure here, and I haven't lost it here, it really shakes it up because we're trying to run our system off of Ziegler and our big users are on the opposite end of town. And the reason we got into that was, you know, we built our first wellhouse by Freeway Mini Storage. That well initially, when they were test drilling, was 1,000 gallons a minute. When they drilled the well that we're going to connect, we only had 400 gallons a minute. Well, they needed 1,700 for fire suppression. So, they built that tank system down there with the caveat that we were going to buy it. So, that was our next phase. Instead of water tower, water treatment, we were going to move into that system, which bought us another, you know, five or six years. But now, we're just, we're past that point now that, you know, it's creating us too much trouble.
Does that cause hammering?
Oh, absolutely.
They can really feel it.
So, if you're sitting in the wellhouse and you watch, you'll see pressures that are pushing 90-plus PSI. And that creates some serious troubles. So, because you turn all that capacity on and, you know, running aces is filling, I'm not picking on them, by the way, but they are clearly that crazy user. When they turn on and off that water like that, they're flowing out of a four-inch pipe probably, you know, 3,000 gallons a minute. And then you go from 3,000 gallons a minute to zero. That's a lot of water that's moving that direction and then it stops and it hits the wall and then it goes back the other way. And you'll watch it, you'll watch the gauges. They just go like this for two or three minutes.
Does that affect the hydrants, then?
Yes. I mean, hypothetically, you could have a, you could have a blowout somewhere. It could separate a pipe. I mean, it could do all sorts of things that could be really ugly. We've knock on wood have not ever had that trouble. And I take some of that to our system is new and the pipes in the ground are plastic. So, maybe they expand and contract a little bit differently than what ductile iron would do, even though, you know, ductile iron is a good pipe as well. But there's just some things that make it really difficult now that we've grown to try to manage.
Can you tell if there's a leak in the line somewhere?
It depends on how big it is. So, I mean, if it's, you know, 250 gallons a minute, yeah, you'll know it. I mean, because your pumps are running and, you know, at some point, that demand, it might take you a little bit of time to figure it out, but our pumps don't run nonstop. So, I mean, they'll run and shut off, run and shut off because we can supply that demand. But if you have that steady flow, you're going to see that, hey, something's running. And if hypothetical, Ziegler Pump House is running, that will, if one of those pumps run for a certain period of time, it'll hit a timer and it'll call and say, hey, I've been running a long time. Maybe there's something wrong. So, it calls us and says, hey, there's, you know, this pump has been running. Maybe you should check it out. So, yeah, you can figure those things out, but... So, I didn't mean to hijack, but I wanted to give them a little bit of history so it kind of maybe makes a little more sense.
Yep. Our problem is not a capacity problem. Our problem is more of a...
Our problem is a...
A usage, a usage peak and, I mean, the variation in usage is what's hard on our system. It's not that we don't have the capacity to provide the water we need to.
It's just not where it needs to be, is one of the bigger problems. Plus, you know, you can't, you can't beat a gravity system, right? I mean, there's water up and it just flows down and it's steady pressure all the time. Our system is not steady pressure, ever. So, that's the hard part when you operate a pressure type of system, which is what ours is. You have crazy high numbers, low numbers. I mean, you could get down to, you know, 30 PSI and hypothetically, if you start getting into that 20 PSI, now you start having Department of Health issues because you can actually draw water in from somewhere else because you've sucked enough pressure out of your system that it doesn't hold anything out. So, hypothetically, if I had a garden hose in my yard and it was sitting down in the drainage ditch by my cow feeder, it could actually suck that water back into the system and then you, then it creates a catastrophe.
A nasty problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's where you've seen what would have happened in Blaine about, I don't know how many year ago, years ago it's in. But they lost system pressure and then there's a boil water notice because once you lose pressure in that pipe, you can get contaminants coming into the pipe where when the pipe's pressurized, it's going to leak outward. So, on low pressure situations, you can get into those conditions if you get below 20 PSI. So, yeah, really, the difficulty with that system, the maintenance and, you know, even having well pumps starting and stopping frequently is hard on those wells. Usually, it's something you want to run steadily for a while and then turn off. That was the big driver to start looking at this, but we didn't want to, we wanted to look holistically at the water too and see, you know, is there quality concerns? Is there treatment concerns? So, really, the pressure issue was the main concern initially. And then as the report came, you know, the manganese became a second item. So, with the water tower, that's one of the primary needs of the system. For smaller systems, you know, when these systems are separated, running lower volumes, those systems work. As you get bigger and bigger and more complicated, you're relying on mechanical equipment to provide your system pressure. Where, once the water's in the air with your water tower, typically, what would happen? The water tower gets filled up by the wells and then slowly drains down as people use it. And because it's all... And then slowly drains down as people use it and because it's all up in the air. If Running Aces takes 2,000 gallons a minute for five minutes. The tower just dropped a little. And then once it gets to a low point, the wells kick on, fill it back up and then shut off. And then you have water there. If you lost power or mechanical equipment went down, you still have water in the tower. Your pipes are still pressurized. Whereas when you're on mechanical equipment, if you have failures and you can't pump water. Your pressure can be gone really quickly. So the tower, just the stability of it with the pressure, the fire protection, all of those things. For a community of your size, in terms of your water supply needs. That's a really big need for the system and it's going to it's going to provide reliability in the system, but it's also going to reduce maintenance. So any more questions on?
The only thing I was going to ask is you said you didn't put the future, you know, hover into the future on that map. Will you provide that?
Yes, that is in the report. I'm sorry that's not in here. And so we will have a finalized report. After we have the discussion tonight and see if there's any other updates for it. But that has projections in it and then the future flow requirements. And so essentially, looking at a 20-year planning period is what we would normally do. Again, that size would double. And then the water tower we're looking at would be like 150,000 gallons approximately. Is what the size would be. So I think, let's see, we're jumping ahead a few here. We got through the main system needs. So when it comes to the treatment options, there's a couple of different options. And again, we wanted to take a holistic approach and see what all the needs may be. And so the two kinds of options looked at are gravity filtration or a general filtration is going to remove iron and manganese. That's the main things it's going to do. It doesn't provide much more treatment than that. There's a lot of iron and manganese treatment facilities in the state of Minnesota. Because those are primary contaminants that are in the state. Another option, because your water is also hard, is would you ever look at a softening facility? And so reverse osmosis is another option that would take on softening, which would right now we have home softeners and your users are softening at their locale. Is if you did it centrally, they could eliminate that process. One of the main drivers we see for that in the state right now is actually on the wastewater side. That chlorides are becoming a limit on wastewater discharges. And when home softeners are used, salt is used to do an ion exchange process. And that discharges chlorides into the water stream, which end up in the wastewater plant, which end up in the discharge, which end up in the receiving water. And so as these chloride limits are more prominent across the state. Facilities are needing to look at softening their drinking water to get rid of the softener systems in houses. Because those contribute chlorides to the water. Whereas like a central facility, we would design that doesn't use that same technology. So the chlorides are not introduced into the water. So that is one of the primary drivers for softening and the reason we wanted to discuss it is there's new regulations coming out all the time and chlorides are one that you may have heard about that are becoming more prevalent out there. So so, sorry, I jumped ahead again. I think the next slide talked about the gravity filtration. And then also the filtration with reverse osmosis. So at this time, going to a softening facility would likely not make sense in terms of treatment. But we did want to mention it because at some point those chloride limits, you know, may come down. So
Brian? Question regards to, does Met Council put on chloride limits on, because obviously all our wastewater goes to the council plant.
Yes. So eventually, you know, it's all going to trickle uphill. Water flows downhill, but this is going to come uphill, right? So if we have regulations from Met Council that they have to meet a chloride limit, they are going to have to go out to all their users. Because trying to address that issue at their facility is going to be problematic. So then it would kind of trickle back out. So as far as where they're at right now with it, I don't know what Met Council is faced for chlorides, but just knowing how regulations work. It's worth mentioning because if they're, if it's talked about in the state at some point in the future. We all have to be thinking that it's going to affect everybody.
Well, the hard part for us too on the chlorides is our water system is very small, so there's very small amount of users. That would be there's a very small amount of users, right? So we don't pump that many gallons of water every year or that much sewage as far as that goes. But in our system, there's a high percentage of chloride users, meaning that almost everybody has a water softener. Because the water is hard enough that they're trying to get rid of that staining. So if they work off of a percentage that says if you put a million gallons of water in you're at an 80% number, I don't know how they're going to do it, but we would probably likely meet that standard because, you know, you look at the water softening system in Running Aces, I mean, it's a room half this size. So I mean, they have a massive water softening system in there. I don't know what Blaine Brothers put in, but if you go down to Ziegler, they have a relatively large system in there. So I mean, most of the big commercial users are putting that stuff in as well. So it's not just residential. So I don't know how they're going to calculate, but conceivably, we could meet that standard. Depending on how they say regulate.
Okay, let's see. I think we can go to the next slide. So when it comes to either citing a treatment facility or the water tower or both. There was three sites looked at. So one, two and three are listed on here. And then actually the next slide gives a little bit of a zoom in on each of those. So probably the most important things to point out here are, we'll get into talking about next steps and preferred alternatives. If there's a land purchase happening, we would recommend that there is room, there's enough room there for a tower and treatment facility, even if say you'd only do a tower at this time. It would be wise to have enough property there to set it up for treatment in the future, if you think that's something that would happen in the future. So site one has the existing wellhouse on site. The, one of the challenges there, we can go to the next slide is zooms in on those, I think. Is just, there's old ponds on site and there's wetlands. And so it's a tough site to navigate to fit both a treatment plant and a tower on. And the wells are there, so it was initially looked at because they're close, but the site is just not going to be conducive to building those other structures on. So if treatment is added, we'd have to get a raw water line to the eventual site for the treatment plant.
Just so people know, site one is where wellhouse two, three sits. That's the Pryners property, Pryner Reserve. I'm going to say it's Pryners Reserve. I don't know what we call it at this point, but it's across from Pryners Reserve. Site number two is across the northerly driveway of
Running Aces.
And then site number three is the property just north of, I'm going to call them RVs.com or Gander Outdoors. I'm not really sure what their name is at this point.
If you go with a gravity filtration system, will you have to have a backwash pond at these sites?
Typically now, we see a reclaim base in being used and so the filters need backwashing and generates a wastewater. We can recoup about 90% of that clean water. We let the solids settle out, take the clean water off the top and go back through the treatment plant to significantly reduce the amount of waste. And then that would be, the waste would be pumped to the sanitary sewer system.
I guess what my question is, would that additional surface facility affect some of the limited acreage on some of these sites?
That facility is fairly small, that reclamation tank. And so in general, for a treatment facility, if we're looking at 600,000 gallons a day, you're probably looking close to two acres, acre and a half to two acres would be a a comfortable site. The reason the site shrinks down is when we have potable water tanks below the ground. You have to have a 50-foot setback from any source of contamination and property lines. And so whatever property you take, you have to draw a 50-foot box around the property line and we can't put any tanks within that 50-foot of the proper line. So it starts to shrink a little bit faster. So on the different sites here for sites two and three, we've kind of shown where a water tower could go. And then the potential land needs for the water treatment facility. And so just a rough outline of the amount of property being shown there on each of the sites. The preferred site from us and staff would be site three. That is, has the most central location. The raw water piping for a treatment plant from the wells would be a manageable distance. And so site three is the preferred site.
Also, if you were to have a water tower there at site three, it's a billboard along the interstate. Display the city's name.
Add another cell phone tower.
That's right. You can do some leases on there.
And it is equidistant, more or less, between the two wellhouses. So that you could tie in all of the wells much more conveniently.
Okay, so the next slide is the the one everybody's been waiting for, right? So how much do these things cost, right?
Well, we're going to get funding, so it doesn't matter, right?
Right, right.
For some of it.
For some of it, right? So a very preliminary cost evaluation here. And this is based on recent projects we've done, recent sizes. I do want to mention that with like the treatment facility, there are different materials to look at. You can look at concrete, you can look at steel. And some of that gets into the life cycle cost where concrete's going to be there for a long time. Steel needs to be painted and possibly replaced. So there are lots of different things to consider within the cost. But a rough cost for the water treatment plant, you see there at six and a half million. The water tower at 1.5. There would be some raw water man if there is a treatment facility to get the wells to the treatment facility. And then land acquisition. So initially there 8.8 million. We have a lot of unknowns at this point, so you see a contingency in there just for planning purposes. And then with engineering, you know, we have a total at 12.6 million. I have a range on that because there's lots of other decisions to make in terms of building materials and things like that. What I mentioned before is the current grant for manganese is 50% at $3 million. And in terms of other grant sources for a project like this, there are no other like public facilities authority funding options likely for your community. So you'd probably be looking at, you know, direct bonding, things like that, working through the legislature. But as we've talked about it, the tower is a primary need that needs to be addressed. The manganese treatment, you know, this is a difficult one for the council because there are health advisory limits out there, but it is not mandated. So it is a decision for the council if you would want to consider treatment at this time or if it's something that you would consider in the future. It is possible that manganese could become a standard in the future, which means then you would have to meet the limit. I have no indication of if and when that would occur. The state has not really provided any information on that. So at this point, for the funding application, which I talked about at the beginning, which is the primary next step. We can apply for both treatment and tower and get on the list. And like I said, there is no requirement for you to do any of those projects. So we would recommend getting on the list. And you can be on the list for, it'll just carry over year to year. And however you decide to implement projects, you'll be one step closer to the funding on that.
And to clarify too, the funding through the PFA could be a combination of the grant that you discussed and then low interest loans, correct?
Yes, thank you, Kevin. So funding for these would be available through PFA. You very easily could get a loan, which is a low interest loan over 20 years. They're going to be below market rates. I think currently they maybe still been around 2% for their loans. So that loan is pretty readily available. It's the grants that are that are a little bit more difficult. So I guess questions, comments?
What size tank did you say you were recommending?
About 150,000 gallon tank.
Does that meet 20-year future growth plans?
Yes.
And what kind of shape tank would it be? Would it be just a cylinder? Bowl shaped, what?
The most economic for that size is what we call a spheroid, but that's kind of the normal bowl shaped you would see. I think that's going to be what you would go with for that size of tank. We don't, you don't see the legged towers anymore with the four legs. Just structurally and rehab costs and all those things, those have kind of been phased out.
Bowl on a pedestal, it'd be what would the height of it be? 198 feet, less than 200 to meet the FAA standards or?
So your height, you're probably looking at 150? Probably to get the necessary pressure you'd want in your system.
And what would the difference in the cost be if you went up, say, to 250,000 gallons? Do you have any reductions in cost as you go up because you've got some things fixed already covered? Or is that something that's even worth looking at?
There is an economy of scale there because you got to get the water there, so you have that whole structure being built. So the yes, there will be economy of scale if you go up. I'd have to look at the pricing and we could definitely do an evaluation of 50,000 gallon increments for you guys to see how that cost changes per volume.
Can you just kind of briefly touch on what the criteria is for sizing the bowl or the
Sure.
The capacity?
So there's a couple of different parameters for sizing that tower. One is kind of your average day usage. And so you want enough in the bowl for your average day. And so you would, the 150,000 would meet that criteria for 2044. The other one is fire flow. And so you want enough storage to be able to fight a fire. Now, as you saw earlier, your well capacity is really quite high compared to your usage. And so one of the things that is keeping that tower a little bit smaller is the fact that you have such big wells. Because if you're fighting a fire, you can have a pump running and take from the tower at the same time. And so normal communities that would have 150,000 gallon tower probably have well pumps that do 200 gallons a minute. Or you guys have well pumps that are at, two of them at 1,000. And so you have a lot more capacity coming out of the wells to supplement what will be coming out of the tower at the same time. So if you fought a fire for 60 minutes at 2,000 gallons a minute. You would take 60,000 gallons from the tower and 60,000 gallons from the well pump. So that would, you know, drain you down to 90,000 in the tower if you were 150. So that's kind of a unique thing here with the capacity in the wells.
What's your experience been when these towers are put in, how it affects ISO ratings? And does that result in any kinds of significant reduction in people's insurances?
It can if there isn't proper fire flow before the tower. And so I don't know how that would affect it here because you still, you have the fire flow capacity.
I think here hypothetically, if we built 150,000 gallon water tower. We have 150,000 gallon above ground storage right now. So it's potentially a wash in my head. But because we can still supply that, we can supply it. It might be ugly, but we can supply it where, you know, the water tower is seamless pressure, right?
Yeah, so I don't have experience with this particular scenario. Usually we see it where there's inadequate pressures and fire flows at a hydrant. So you might have a section of town that only gets 500 gallons a minute from a hydrant. you might have a section of town that only gets 500 gallons a minute from a hydrant. And if we loop a system, now we can get 1,500 gallons a minute, so that affects this. I don't know if they would give credit for elevated storage versus like pumped fire flow.
That's an Al Newman question. Because we have, we have capacity, and the, it would be equal capacity, right? If we look at them identically, just one's, one's gravity and one's a pump. So I don't know. You know, we have generators at our pumping facilities, so hypothetically, if the power goes out, we can, we can still supply it. So I don't really know that answer. If they, if they rate a gravity system because it's always gonna be there so long as there's water in it. But we could ask Al that question. And he'd, I'm guessing he'd have to ask somebody too, because that's just, it's one of those, it's a capacity for capacity, so I don't know.
Well, he'll be here in two weeks, we'll add that to his list.
I just have one quick question. So you mentioned we'd still have the water pumps, so even if we put in a tower, we'd still keep the water pumps?
You would still have your well pumps.
Our well pump.
Yes, the well, you'd still have that to get the water out of the ground, but you could eliminate the other tank and other, other pumps from the Ziegler tank.
Okay.
So we potentially wouldn't fill those tanks. I think, I think the intent, in my head anyways, is they stay there, we own them. We just don't use them at this point. If we thought there's gonna be, hey, we're gonna, we need to do some water tower maintenance, then we disinfect that tank and we fill it and we operate. Old school.
And if you wanted to utilize them as storage, you still could. You have the pumpage there, and it can provide storage because now if you had a tower, you've, you've taken care of that pressure fluctuation issue. So it kind of would come down to ongoing maintenance of keeping that structure ready versus what function you'd have for it, which is always kind of a balance. You have a piece of infrastructure.
Right.
So we've heard some from Jim about what the ongoing maintenance of our current system is. How does that change with the water tower and the treatment center? I mean, that, how much more do you have to do to maintain it? Especially if you're running parallel systems, if you've got what we have right now, plus you're putting in a water tower. I mean, how much more, like, are we gonna need three more guys to do this, or?
So, so basically, the crazy system goes away, and you operate off of a water tower. So now basically, your supply and demand is gonna come off of what the water tower's telling you.
But, but is there additional, you know, water quality checks and things that you have to do to make sure that that water that's sitting in the tank is potable and not contaminated? And I mean, I would imagine it's gotta be different than when you got a flow of water that's always going. I mean, when you got hundreds of thousands of, it's, so you're doing the same thing for water quality checks?
We'll be doing the exact same thing. So like the Ziegler water tank, we have to take, we have to take that down, that has to be cleaned and inspected. Above-ground storage is treated the same as elevated storage. So a water tower at some point has to be inspected and cleaned and, you know, potentially painted and maintained. All of the same, water quality criterias are the same. You're still supposed to turn your water over in a certain amount of time, you're still adding the same chemicals. All of that stuff stays the same. It is just a simpler system to operate.
And you could operate with the same number of people we have now.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the water treatment facility would add a little bit of time. There's some, you're now treating, so you'd be running some tests maybe daily or a couple times a week to make sure that that treatment facility's running. You have extra equipment in there that you're checking, recording things on. But that's, you know, maybe four hours a week of...
And, and do you always have to have water treatment facility along with a water tower, or is that only if you're gonna treat for manganese and?
It would just be the manganese. So you have the options of saying, the tower will solve the pressure issues and all those maintenance issues, and that can be a standalone project and say, yes, we realize we need the tower. The treatment can be added to that, or it can be done without it?
And can, is, is the water treatment facility fairly easily added on after the fact if, you know, there gets to be regulations that says, oh, sorry, but now you have to?
Yep. I think, I think the biggest thing would be having enough acreage by the tower to be able to put the plant there, because having the plant next to the tower can have some benefits when you design that facility.
So looking at the numbers, then, though, in the first column, alternative one, the water treatment facility cost of 6.5 million, that, that's that piece. So if we didn't do that, it would be?
If we looked at just the water tower, the construction cost we have here is 1.5, so the total cost, it may be around 2 million for the water tower.
Oh, okay. I was noticing that's the least cost of the whole thing besides the land, is the actual water tower.
Yes, and that is probably, is probably your biggest need, and the manganese is a little subjective, right, on the, on the health risk level. We've had some communities that say, yes, we're gonna do this, we're gonna put in treatment, and we have others that don't, so.
It wasn't worth doing the study without looking at all.
Yeah, I'd talk...
So I mean, you're doing that study, and we know that it's a, it's a potential need to make the water quality better. It's not mandated at the moment, but potentially could be. So, you know, at the end of the day, if we say that we're not gonna entertain the treatment side of it, you know, the water tower's still in need, and it would make sense to buy enough land to add water treatment later.
Yep, that makes sense.
A driver I've seen in other communities for the manganese is that they've maybe already had dirty water complaints. Everybody doesn't like the water because it's colored, and now there comes along an opportunity to get some grant funds to deal with that because of the manganese. I think that's where we've seen people kind of jump on that because it offers a potential grant opportunity to solve a problem they were already interested in solving.
Do we have much complaints?
FYI, we do get those calls.
Oh, really?
I fielded two of them today.
Oh. You know, because I, I don't know how different it is with private wells, but I don't have any of that problem with my, in fact, I barely have to soften mine because when I test for hardness, just, it's, it's almost, I mean, it's almost perfect coming out of the ground.
Some wells are fantastic. My well at home is terrible. So I have the proverbial, you know, orange sidewalks and orange siding that I have to try to clean once, you know, once or twice a year. And I had a lady call me, I, I'm not sure where she lived. It was either, I, I'm assuming that it was St. Clair Lakes, but it could have been Priner's. But, you know, according to her, we've wrecked every faucet in her house and her sinks are brown. So, I, I mean, I get that, that's potentially not a true statement, but she's definitely noticing some discoloration that she's potentially not used to.
Yeah.
So, and the water's hard.
Do these water towers have agitators in them?
You can. A lot of people are putting them in now for a couple of reasons, but to prevent freezing. And there's some pretty good technologies out there that are fairly cheap that, that mix the tower to prevent ice buildup.
I was just wondering about that because everything out there that's on it, you see the cycle go down, you're not using much water during the winter time.
Yep.
You'd almost have to have one in there.
A lot of places have gone to them because they, ice in the tower, it happens a lot, but it can have catastrophic failures when it goes wrong. And, you know, we've seen towers collapse from ice in it, so.
I know one, years ago, one enforced lake froze, and it turned into being, well, it wasn't that bad, you know?
Yeah.
And depending on what your usage is, a lot of times you will not fill, you just have a little water in the bottom of the bowl.
Yeah, a lot of cities in, in winter will lower the levels so they, so they want to turn it over because they're not using enough water. It's kind of a ying and a yang then, because if your tower's not full, you also don't have fire protection. So it's kind of a balancing act, and that's where most places now are putting mixers in.
So for us, we do run a slightly less level in the winter in the Ziegler pump house, but the Ziegler pump house actually has heaters in it. So, so that, I mean, it's not hot water coming out of there, but it keeps it at like, I don't know, 45 or 47 degrees.
Do you have a color chart so we can look and see what colors they are?
Whatever you want, and you, you can look at some places where they hire an artist to go paint their logo, so.
I would like, I would like a teapot-shaped one like they have in Lindstrom.
I think they got that copyrighted.
Yeah. I will say this, when you go to put the, the name on it, if you can draw it with a stencil, it's much cheaper. As long as they can stencil it, it doesn't cost much. But we've had some that are interested in almost custom art, and there's a big dollar amount.
Well, you can go get one of those guys that do the railroad carts, you know? Give them a couple of canvas spray paint, send them up there. One of the lengthiest city council meetings I ever attended was, attended was about the color and the font of the lettering on a water tank.
Yeah, we triple and quadruple check that before that painter goes up there, so. So I guess, you know, in, in terms of action for the council, the biggest thing is that we, we will be putting in these funding applications. We will include both treatment and tower on those. There's no harm in doing that, and then it positions you for decisions down the road. But then I think ultimately, not necessarily has to be tonight, and if there's more information for the council, we will be finalizing the report and sending that to you. The next steps would be determining what, is there a project you're ready to move forward with, and then kind of moving into those, those design steps and moving forward with a project.
Brian, is there a resolution that's required for the application?
There is, there is not a resolution required, and, and the applications are fairly simple, and we'll put those together, and then they'll, they'll go on City Letterhead. So we would just send those over, and you guys can send them back, and we can submit them on your behalf. That funding list, they're, they're due in here in May, but it actually gets published in August, September.
And then how does the funding work? You said you don't have to do it, so like, there must be some time limit if you don't use it, you're gonna lose it, no?
Well, so the, the loans are kind of, would likely be there for you, and those are kind of perpetually sitting there, and you can just hang on the list. If you want to work towards the grant funding, there's usually steps you may need to take to get your project up the list more. And, and one of those is actually designing it and getting the design approved. So if you can imagine, everybody's got a wish list of stuff they want to do, and so you're kind of on one part of the list, well, if you actually go design it and get it approved by Department of Health, it bumps you up the list, because now you're shovel-ready project. And so if you were pursuing the grants for the water treatment, that would probably be a necessary step to try to move yourself up that, that ranking list. But the list is very flexible, so you can be on the list and you can stand for five years and do nothing.
And is there only grant funding for the water treatment, not for the water tower?
Right. Through the Department of Health and the PFA, there's really two funding sources that are, are normal through that, and there's this emerging contaminant grant, which covers the manganese, and then there's an affordability-based grant, which is basically on median household income. But they don't fund, that's for residential costs. And since you have such a high commercial industrial user base, when it comes to calculating those grants for affordability, because you don't have a lot of residential usage, they're not gonna, you're not gonna get those affordability grants.
And when you, when you borrow money to do this, does that end up getting assessed back to the property owners, or what, how, does it work the same way as any utilities? Because I would not want to hit those people with another, the ones that just hooked up.
No, you, you normally fund it through user rates, so it would be through your water And so that, that's a big part of, of this process too, is working with your financial advisor and, and those commercial industrial users, because you're gonna have some big users on the system that potentially would have the biggest impact of this, any rate increases.
And then, that was my other question, is are there any potential new businesses that are going in or that are thinking about going in that would be big water users that might, you know, like I've heard rumor of like a car wash or a truck wash, I have no idea how big a user they are.
You guys really know more about that than I do, but...
I'm just making it up, just as, as an example, like if you had one of those going in, are they big water users, or do they recycle so much of their water they're not really?
I'm not, I'm not sure how truck washes or car washes work. The couple that I know of, they recycle a certain amount of water. You know, one of the bigger users potentially in the mix right now would be the apartment complex. I mean, that's, you know, we all know about that one. I mean, you put 150 rooms in there, they'll, they'll use a fair amount of water.
On that truck wash, proposed truck wash facility, I would assume that there's some recycling in it. Not only is there, it's a double whammy. You get hit on the water costs, plus you get hit on the increased sewer costs too.
So what happens if we did nothing? Something goes down, I mean?
Well, I can tell you, the last time that it went down was the other night at 1:00 in the morning.
When somebody ran a car into it?
When we had 12 inches of snow.
Oh, I thought, it didn't go down when the car hit it? The well?
Kinda, but, I mean, no. I mean, nobody noticed anything, right? But when our system went out of whack, I'm gonna call it, because like I said, it's three individual systems trying to play nice together. We actually, every once in a while, have to make adjustments. You don't generally make an adjustment on a Tuesday at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's usually on a Sunday night, or, like I said, the last time it snowed, when we had how many inches of snow, and I actually wasn't feeling very well, so I wasn't even gonna work, and my phone started blowing up at 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning. So I called, and I'm like, what, what's going on here? And Bill and Brady were at the wellhouse, wellhouse one, because the, that air-over-water tank, if that water, if the usage gets funky, what it'll do is it'll actually overfill that tank, and then it loses pressure, and then the well pumps don't turn on, and it really, it screws everything up. So, without getting into too much detail, you have to basically drain a bunch of water out of the tank and then pressurize it again, and then get everything reset, and then start everything back up. So that always happens at very inconvenient times, so.
But what would the cost, I mean, would you blow a pump for something? I mean, is it, we talked about hammering and stuff like that. What kind of damage are you talking? Could we do a million dollars damage if the thing went wacko, or the whole thing shut down, or?
I, I think, so my fear is not that we blow a pump. My fear is that the system goes in awry, kind of like I just described, and running aces or Ziegler or somebody starts on fire, and we don't have any water. Because what happens is our wells operate off of that air tank, and if that says there's four feet of water in there, those wells won't run. And the Ziegler pump house can pump water, but it'll just keep pumping water until it hits the low point, and at some point, and we've been there, it's at six feet of water, and the, and no wells are running, and you can't get them to run. So now you have to go in there and, you know, override the Ziegler pump house, so it'll pump lower than the minimum, or than what we're calling the minimum, and then restabilize the system, and then fire up all the wells. So, I mean, it's not, it can be tragic. I will tell you that today, it's way less stressful for me than it was before we hooked up the Ziegler pump house, because we only had that air-over-water tank, which is 7,500 gallons that we fill halfway, and you get to use about 500 gallons of that before you're out of pressure. So really, by the time, hypothetically, let's just say something went wrong, something started on fire, they started running water, before our system would even say, there's a problem and call me, we're done. And then, by the way, I gotta drive 20 minutes to get there. So, I mean, it was a real problem before, and that is probably why I don't have any hair at the moment, because that was nerve-wracking. So you ultimately have these high-demand, high-capacity users that, you know, they don't use water... you know, they don't use water till they need it, and when they need it, they take it, and you're out. And then, I mean, you could end up like a blaine pretty quick, and the goal of public works is to never make the paper. And you'd make the paper at that point. So, you know, Ziggler started on fire, and, you know, our municipal system didn't supply any water. That's a bad day.
What caused it to go out Jim, the night of the snow? It was only six inches, there was nothing.
It had nothing to do with the snow, it was just bad timing. So basically, what happens is, you know, people were using water at some point, and over time, that tank just got out of whack, and.
What does that mean?
It got out of whack, meaning that it lost all the pressure in the tank because of that water hammer. So that water hammer runs back and forth, and then it overpressurizes that tank. That tank has a blow-off valve on it, it blows a bunch of air out. So then what happens is, there's less pressure in there. Ultimately, it's easier to push water into it, because it doesn't compress as hard. So then you fill it up a little bit more, and pretty soon, it's now it's over four feet, now it's at 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.6, right? And the Ziggler pump house will just keep running, but at some point, it says, hey, I need to fill up. And then, then things start going into alarm, because the wells won't turn on, because the tank is overfull, and there's no pressure in it.
So there's no way to synchronize those better than what we have them?
The trouble is, is they don't all work together as well as they could, because of the distance between them, and where our capacity is versus where our demand is. And they operate off of radios, so there's some delay in time for when things start and stop. There's, there's all sorts of little nuances that create, you know, you take a little, take a little, take a little, pretty soon I got a lot.
And there's no way to, kind of like what they do with the, with the electrical grid, where you try to push some of your high usage to less peak times, is there any way of doing that? So if, if Running Aces is filling their tank at 10:00 in the morning, could they fill it at 10:00 at night? And it would be less of a drain on the system, and probably no, no big deal for them?
I don't, I, I don't think, so this time of year, our demand is not very high. So it's a lot of little things that add up to a catastrophe for us, you know what I mean? So it's, I mean, Running Aces clearly uses the most amount of water with them in the hotel. So, I mean, they're doing laundry at night, they're doing this, I don't know what they do there, right? But they use water, and, you know, all of those little things just show up, and then all of a sudden, there's an alarm. So, I mean, we, we look at it every day, and, you know, everything looks normal, but it goes out of whack pretty quick.
But Running Aces doesn't have their own storage tank, they just, they pull out of the system when they need it.
They use our water, right?
Yeah, I'm just asking if, you know, if you're, if you're Excel Energy, you offer a discount if you use your air, you know, use your, your big draws on off-peak hours, right? Is there a way to do that with our water, where businesses could be incentivized? If they, if their usage was such that they could schedule it differently?
I, I mean, I can't tell you that that would help us or not. I, I mean, because if you, if you take hypothetically the 100 users that we have, and they all use a small amount of water at the same time, that's a draw to the system. So how do you, the things that people don't think about when they're on city sewer and water is a tornado comes through, their toilet still works, and their water still works. That's because our side.
Not at my house, but.
Not at your house.
That's right.
But that's why I said, city sewer and water people, because theirs always works. So they, if they got gas stoves, their, their gas stove always works, they can always go to the bathroom, they can take a shower. I mean, they have those facilities to them all the time, and people use them all the time, so.
And the thing is, the data isn't that granular, where you would know exactly when the users, what time of day users draw water, it's just basically, you've got a monthly meter read, correct?
Well, I was gonna say, you can't get that from the meter read?
I would have to read the meters every day, but I wouldn't know when they used it if I read it. You know what I mean, if I read it at 8:00 every day, I don't know when they use it, it's just a 24-hour period. But it, you know, they could have used their high capacity during the day, and thrown my system off, and I don't know it until I know it, if that makes sense.
I, yeah, I, I just, I assume that maybe there was some, like, somebody wasn't just running out looking at a meter, that there was some sort of electronic feed that it gets, and so you could get into that level of granularity if you wanted to. Sounds like not.
I don't know. I don't know exactly how it works, because I don't play around, so our site is called Beacon, right? I don't play around in it very often, so it's one of those things that, I know we can go in there, and I can look at somebody's house and see that they're running water, and how much water they, they run. But unless I was staring at it all the time, or I was doing a read every five minutes, I don't know how I would know when they were using their majority of water. And that would be a massive amount of data, by the way.
Well, so one of the, the charts that you showed, I thought was on a daily basis, obviously not for a particular business, but.
Yeah, that was, that was total city usage, so that, that's your, your well flow meters that are tied in.
And that, and that's based off of when Tim, Bill, or Brady, or myself go in and read it. So it could be at 10:00 in the morning, it could be at 2:00 in the afternoon, depending on what we're doing. But that's just a, a potential 24-hour period, so let's just say that we check it at the same time every day, that's just that number.
And just in, in general, I think, as you think about this, is kind of just the general stability of your utility. You know, as you're, if you're a growing community, and there's, there's industrial, you know, industrial, commercial coming in, there's the apartment complex, is that as more people come in, your system's just gonna get more complicated, more users, and there's more liability in you providing a reliable source of water? Because as you have those commercial industrial users, and maybe you have hiccups, you know, does, does a business shut down for 24 hours because water wasn't available, you know? And so I, I think it's hard to quantify that, but the general reliability of your system as you get bigger is one of the things that, where the tower comes in.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I was asking the question is because what I was understanding was the problem with the fluctuation in, in draw was because Running Aces was a big user, and that was creating problems for the pumps, because the pumps are way over here, and Running Aces is here. And so that's why I said, if there was a way to smooth that out a little bit more, maybe that buys you time and protects your system a little bit more, and if it wasn't, if it wasn't, you know, difficult to implement it on their end.
For all intensive purposes, we don't have those glitches very often. So, so when I say that, it's not like it happens once a week, right? I mean, we could go for months, or six months, and not, not have that trouble, but it happens. So, so that's the, that's the hard part. So for me to, for me to try to narrow down a day that it's gonna happen, I, I think it's kind of one of those things that all the stars align today, and it happened. So, I mean, I look at it seriously almost every night before I go to bed, because I want to know what I'm in for, right? So it's one of those things that I can look at, I can see that everything says that it's where it's supposed to be, I go to bed. I've looked at it sometimes, and it's like, oh, this doesn't look right. So then you watch it, and then, you know, everything corrects, you know, you know, because something, you know, this pump was running and not that pump, or, you know, something was a little funky, but it stabilizes. Because it literally is three systems that try to work together, and all three can operate differently. And that's really what makes it so difficult. I've had people come in, so people that deal with this stuff every day, to say, I need some help, because I'm not sure if I'm doing this right, right? I mean, you know, how, how, how could we run this better? And they look at it, and they're like, I don't know, I've never seen anything like this. So, I mean, it's just, we've, we've grown, and we've adapted to that. And at some point, it's getting to be a really big animal. I really am probably the one that knows the most about it, because I was here for all three implementations. Tim, Bill, or Brady, there's things that they don't know about well one, how, how does it really work? And I was telling Jack today, if I stood in front of the panel today, I would probably stand there for an hour and scroll through everything that it does to just try to wrap my head around what we were doing when we started that one. So, I mean, there's just a lot of things that happen in there.
One, one, one thing to consider when we talk about buying time, and I think that's a very good alternative to look at, is that a lot of this stuff is cumulative, and these surges that we have in the system, the huge differentials in pressure, and it just keeps wearing on certain pieces, and eventually it'll find the weak point, and ultimately, it may blow a hydrant off its, off its stem. Generally, with a fire hydrant, when you put it in where the night it goes up, there's a big wad of concrete behind it. But if you get a little leak, soils get a little loose, and you have these surges, it could blow one off, it could blow a pipe loose, it could break a pipe. But is it gonna happen tomorrow, is it gonna last for another 10 years? That's, you know, we just don't know that.
Any other questions, anyone?
Did you, did you want to go through the schedule? I mean, maybe one of the things that, if, if we get on the funding list, like Brian said, we would, we would know in August or September where we would rank in that system. And if we were only to go forward with the, with the water tower, which is probably the highest priority, what kind of schedule would we be looking at for something like that?
Right, so the one that was in here was, was a combination of both of them. So if it was just the tower, you'd, you'd normally be looking at a design period of, I mean, probably the, one of the bigger things in here to work through would be the land acquisition, right? Because that's gonna have some, some outside influences on it. But in terms of just the design of it, you know, say this was authorized after the funding list came out in August, September timeframe, there'd be, and we had the land in place, that, that's kind of the caveat there. The design is not gonna be super long on, say, just a tower project. You know, so we're looking in a few months, that you could have things out to bid. And then there's gonna be a procurement timeline for that, so, you know, within probably, you're, on the tower, you're probably gonna have a six-to-eight month construction schedule from the time you'd approve it, if they can get on-site and erect the tower and get it painted. And so I think the biggest thing would be that land acquisition piece, to how that would fit in the entire schedule.
Well, looking at the schedule, you have, the months are in the second column.
Yes.
And the project completion is 48, does it take 48 months to complete a project?
So, so that was with the water treatment facility, and then also pursuing some grant funds in there. And so if you, if you get through that funding cycle to where you design it, and then you'd likely wait a second funding cycle. So to get those grants, you would apply this year, you would move through a design phase next winter, and actually get the plans approved, and then the fall of '25 is when maybe you'd get those grant funds. So that schedule gets a lot longer if you're going after the treatment facility with those grant funds. The tower could happen much sooner, if you apply this spring, you would likely be on the list for a loan already come September.
Okay, and the only funding for just the water tower is the low-interest loan?
Through the Public Facilities Authority, it'd be a low-interest loan. So if it's just the tower, and you wanted to go after grant opportunities, probably direct appropriations would be an option through your representatives. That would probably be the other top option for funding of a tower.
Well, I think this is a lot more complicated than our previous discussion.
I have a habit of doing that.
I'll take our scoring matrix any day over this.
You know, it's a lot to wrap your head around.
Yeah, it is.
You have to be careful when you enter the municipal game, because people are coming here because we have the utilities, and they're basing their business designs, all of that stuff off of our utilities, and we have, we said that we were gonna supply them. So, so that's the hard part, right? We've entered the game, now, now you gotta play. And that's, and it, and it's not, it's not a cheap game.
And once, once you get in the game, you can't get out.
So there's no other option to smooth out the fluctuations in, other than a water tower? There's no other solution?
You could, I mean, we'd have to look into kind of a complex control system to see. I think you would need more monitoring, and then you're dealing with communication, so I, I don't want to say there's, there's no way. But I think as you dig into that and the complexity of it.
You're, you're paying people like us or others to try to figure it out. I mean, it becomes more, more technology-based, which requires more analysis.
I mean, it just sounds, it sounds like we're unusual, that the capacity isn't our, our problem. It's this, it's this other fluctuation thing that's a problem. So I'm just, was just saying, is there any other solution to the fluctuation problem? Since capacity, we have plenty of capacity.
Yeah, and, and one of the other client communities that Brian and I are working in is, there was a tremendous capacity issue. They were running out of, they're running out of water in the summertime.
Yeah, then I get, then I get why you need to do something now, different. But I feel like our situation is not that, and, I mean, I'm an engineer, so I don't know.
Our situation is just getting to the point that it's really hard to manage. And it's not, it's not stable, and that's not a position that's fun to be in. I mean, you guys are in the position to say, shoot, I gotta spend $12 million, that's not fun to be in either, right? And, and you potentially make that paper for that thought process too, right? I'm on the other side, and I'm the guy that you guys are gonna beat down my door at 2:00 in the morning saying, somebody ran out of water, this building burned down, because we don't have any water, what the heck happened? You know, so, so that's the other side of the game, right? We, we both feel the pain, just it's different sides of the spectrum. And, and it is, it seriously is nerve-wracking, I mean, that's not, to go from where we started to where we are today, way less nerve-wracking, right? And, and I'm confident that our system works, but it has some glitches. And there's some things in it that functionally you just don't want to happen in your water system. So we talk about water hammer, water hammer also creates turbulated water, which we flush our hydrants out every year, or our system. You turn them on, the water comes out nice and crystal clear, then all of a sudden, it's black. So that stuff is in the lines, so every time you get water hammer, it just hammers that stuff back and forth, and the water is just dirty all the time, and, and I can't fix that.
Yeah.
And, and, and your, and your demand is increasing. I mean, obviously, we've had development, we've had businesses go in, we've had Loves, who's probably another significant water user because of the type of business they are. We've been talking about a apartment complex, 150 units, you know, Hy-Vee, who knows? Other, other development there, Longhornsby, you know, so your demand isn't going down, it's gonna go up and.
No, I, I get it.
One, one, one other thing to consider too, is when you start talking about these types of projects, you just don't say we're gonna do it, and you start on it in three months. You start on it now, and it might be implemented maybe in three years. So the time to start doing some initial planning and prep work is now, whether you able, whether you actually do anything or not is the second question. But, you know, to me, one of the key things to do is, at a minimum, maybe start looking at which is gonna be the preferred site. You know, see if we can do the land acquisition, then maybe do it in, in the other two stages. But if we want something done in three to five years, now's the time, just at least start the preparatory work on it.
Is, is land acquisition eligible in the funding?
Yes, it is.
Is, is it retro?
It'll be retro, because your funding package doesn't start till you get to the construction phase, so you could get reimbursed.
You could get, so you could buy the land now, and then put it into the cost of the project and get funded for it, and so.
And, and just going back to the last discussion about other control methods or other things. And, and just going back to the last discussion about other control methods or other things that could be done, um, I, I think what we're seeing is, is you've been this growing system that's kind of pieced things together as you needed it. And if you take another step to kind of piece things together, at, you know, there's gonna be a point down the road where you look back and go, oh, we should have pulled the Band-Aid off right there, right? And, you know, not stuck five hundred thousand dollars into trying to make this system work again. That's where we should have stopped and said, okay, we gotta just do it right. And, and I think that's a little bit of where you're at, is, you know, could we look into some other alternatives that buy some more time? You could, but then as you continue to grow and grow, fifteen years from now or ten years from now, there's gonna be different council up here looking back and going, why did they do that back then? They should have put a water tower in, right? And I, I think that's a little bit of where you are right now is, it's a difficult decision because you're kind of at that fork in the road. Um, but other solutions then, other than a tower, are gonna probably continue to be that kind of short-term that buys you some time.
Mm-hmm.
Just one more, one more piece to the dysfunctional system.
We wouldn't want you to lose any more hair.
I'm getting pretty lean right now, I'm gonna start knocking on your guys' door. I can't go to Jack, so. Same boat I'm in, so.
It's what this job will do to ya.
What's that?
I said, it's what this job will do to ya.
It sure is.
All right. So we don't need, I mean, obviously, it's a workshop, so we don't take any action tonight. But when would this come before us for an action?
You, you wouldn't need to take any action. I mean, this, in order to submit the application is, is a couple hours of work. So it's really kind of built into our, our current budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we could take care of that, all we need is, is the city letterhead. And so there's really no official action at this point. It's the next step beyond that when you would have to decide, okay, what are we gonna do, um, from here?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's so much new information tonight, this was not a decision-making meeting because this is a lot to, to kind of di- digest.
That was helpful though, thank you, you did a really nice job.
Mm-hmm.
And like I said, if, if anybody wants to take a field trip, I'll, I'll show you. I mean, you, you won't be able to see the dysfunction, right?
Mm-hmm.
But I can explain what each well or pump house does, and you can kind of at least wrap your head around what we're talking about. Because sometimes it is a little nicer to at least visually see it. I know Jesse's been in a pump house or two around, but, um, the rest of you have not, so, I mean...
And just out of curiosity, is the one that got plowed into fixed now?
Say again?
The pump house that got plowed into by the car, is it fixed now?
No.
Oh.
It's, so it has a temporary wall in there. Uh, we've just recently went out to get some quotes from, from a couple contractors. And, and, uh, once we get those back, then we'll just keep moving forward. But, um, hopefully, hopefully relatively soon.
Yeah, the, the water side, I was fixed, it's the building structure that needs to be
Yeah, so, so it just has a wood wall where it used to be concrete. But, you know, we've had some of the electrical removed that was broken off, it'll have to get put back. And, you know, between Tim, Bill, Brady, and I, we rebuilt a bunch of the, you know, water lines inside that were for pre-lubes and things like that, and put all that stuff back together.
And has there been any information on the person who did it and their insurance coverage?
We, so we know obviously who it is.
Yeah.
And we have their insurance information, and that was given to the League of Minnesota Cities.
Okay.
So basically, the way that insurance thing works is the league is gonna pay for it.
Yep.
And then the league goes after, and, oh, we pay our deductible, and I think it's five hundred dollars or something.
Yeah.
Um, then basically, if the league gets one dollar back from the, I'll call them the perpetrator, um, then we get our whole deductible back. So I, I don't see any reason why we, why we wouldn't win this,
Yeah.
you know, battle. But, you know, it's just that, it's an inconvenience, but, you know.
But we don't know what actually happened.
No.
Okay.
And, I mean, we got a police report, but it, it looked like my computer screen right now.
Yeah, I know, and you were gonna see if you could get something that was less redacted, right? Is that, didn't, it didn't work? They weren't willing to do that?
I haven't heard back from them on that. I can follow up and see if they would remove some of that information.
I just was curious.
I don't believe that all the information that was redacted is, are things that they normally do. Um, I'm kind of curious, I'm glad you reminded me that, I wanna check on it.
Okay.
I, I, because I have never had one redacted. I mean, they've always given us everything, no matter what happened. I mean, we've always gotten a full report. I have never seen one like this. So when I opened it, I'm like, I, I mean, I
Probably, probably somebody new on the job.
Say again?
Somebody new on the job.
Potentially.
Yep.
Well, that's all public information now, accidents.
Right?
Right, I mean, I know that.
So I said, maybe it's probably somebody new on the job and they just haven't, you know.
Doctor Jessica or liaison?
Good, I haven't, I haven't seen her for a while, so.
I mean, really, for me, talking to the deputies, I mean, we have a pretty good idea on what happened and how it all shook out. I mean, there's some small details that we don't know that, and, and my head doesn't really matter at this point. But, um, we have the important things, you know, nobody got hurt.
How, and how can that be? I mean, how do you plow your car into a brick wall at a hundred miles an hour and
Everybody wears seat belts and it was a really nice car. So, I mean...
You're still, your, your internal organs are still traveling at a hundred miles an hour. So when they hit that wall that is the other side of your body,
Oh, yeah.
it's not good.
No, I mean, and, I mean, that was a literal dead stop from however fast they were going, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and, and those, and there's some unknowns there, right? But, I mean, at the end of the day, nobody got hurt.
Well, that's, I mean, that's good.
It's a relatively small inconvenience for us at this point. It didn't hamper our system at all.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I mean,
It's as good as it could have turned out.
All good of a bad situation at that point, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we're done.
I think that was it.
Are you like, drive quarters?
We did.
Well, we only have five more items on the agenda.
All right, anything else?
But we're done, you still have to go through them.
All right.
Oh, go ahead.
No, we're done.
Oh, you're kidding.
I'm kidding.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody?
No.
All right, then we'll adjourn our meeting, and we'll see everybody tomorrow night. Talk about the important
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Rob.
Bye.